Good morning, everybody. We'll call the February 25th meeting of the Board of Supervisors together here, and we'll have Supervisor Velazquez reading the, or doing the pledge of
Ready, begin.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good luck.
So we will start with, we don't have roll call. We'll start, we don't have roll call, I think? For some reason? We should have roll call. We don't know. Okay. We'll go with approval of acknowledged certificate of posting. Do I have a motion, please? And a second?
All second.
All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That'll take us to board announcements. Do you want to start Supervisor Satello?
Thank you. I'll start with the Public Defender Oversight Committee. We had a meeting last week, or week before last, and we have finally chosen the committee, community members at large, and the community-based organizations to sit on that committee that will be coming to the Board of Supervisors, hopefully, the beginning of March. But for the community-based organizations, we have the Youth Alliance and LULAC that will be the community-based organizations that will be helping on that committee. So we are moving forward with that. It was a great productive meeting, and I look forward to that coming before the Board of Supervisors. In Ambag, we are talking about our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and I was nominated and voted in to sit on Ambag for, as the second Vice President. So I think that's wonderful. We'll have representation for San Benito County, which is always definitely needed. And then for the Area Aging, is that, am I saying it right? Area Agency on Aging, sorry, I always get that wrong. We had a meeting, and they did an overview of kind of the Seniors Council and the Area Agency on Aging. They are, they operate in kind of a four-year cycle, planning cycle. And right now, we're on year three. They've released RFPs for services. We have a few competing applications for San Benito County right now on the request for proposals, and so the review panel will be reviewing all of those. I am sitting on that review panel, so I, we are, I just got the Google poll, I don't know, yesterday. So we'll start meeting over the next few weeks, and there'll be kind of recommendations. And then, really interesting fact that I learned while I was at that meeting, and kind of, so San Benito County, the sick age sixty and over population has grown by sixty-six percent in our county. We're the third in the state. And Santa Cruz County, who is also the area on aging, represents both San Benito County and Santa Cruz County. And Santa Cruz County is number one in the state, with their sixty and over population has grown by eighty percent. So some really, really important committee that we're sitting on, they're doing some really great work, and something that we need to kind of keep at the forefront. We've got a very, you know, growing population, and make sure that our community services the needs. So that is my update. Thank you.
Supervisor Zenger.
Yeah, I'll just say we've been having lots of ad hoc meetings, San Houston ad hoc, housing ad hoc, but I'm going to save a lot of the updates for our next meeting, where we're going to have sort of a quarterly ad hoc update. So at that meeting, should be a lot of interesting things coming from all the work we've been doing in that regard. Other than that, I'll just say, myself along with Supervisor Kuro will be in DC this weekend slash next week for the National Association of Counties Conference, and we'll be meeting with some of our federal and state representatives at that time. That's all.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'll just basically mention a few ad hocs as well, just making progress on our roads. Ad hoc, we'll have more to come when we do our quarterly update on that, and then fire negotiations moving forward with that. We've had progress on that as well. Just mentioned again, the Legislative Workshop last Friday we had with our representatives. Representative Speaker Rivas was there, along with representatives of Zoe Lofgren's office, Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren, State Senator John Laird was there as well, and our Senator Adam Schiff's representative. And so just want to thank them publicly for that. I thought it was a very productive conversation. And then, also, just last Saturday, was able to attend with Supervisor Velazquez Town Hall in San Juan Batista on fire protection. And again, very productive conversation, and just appreciated the chance to be able to answer some questions there. So Supervisor Velazquez?
You guys covered it all, thank you.
Supervisor Kuro?
The Behavioral Health Committee met, and I want to thank HR for working with the staff at Behavioral Health to bring back the intern, or bring forward the intern program that, right after grad school, we are accepting interns that are, before they get their state bar number. And that has really been a successful program. So I want to thank staff and HR for working together on that. Currently, there are no adult services backlogs, which prior to all of the staffing changes and a lot of changes that have happened at Behavioral Health, there was a waiting list of about sixty for the adults. This is a really big step moving forward in serving our community. So I want to thank all the Behavioral Health team on that. Also, intakes previously were only on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now they are taking intakes from eight-thirty in the morning until four o'clock. Call in or walk in, staff is there to work with you between those hours. And the mobile crisis soft launch will be March 20th. That's when they'll have the 24/7/365 medical beneficiaries, and you can just call 988, and they'll connect you to the mobile crisis center. I want to thank Supervisor Velazquez for attending as the alternate to the Ambag meeting. I wasn't able to attend because of the CSAC meeting. On February 13th, I attended the CSAC meeting in Sacramento. The state budget is currently basically what they're calling a vanilla shell budget. It does not currently include the impact of the LA wildfires, which is going to really change the look of what the budget's going to look like from the state. The entire budget will be issued in May. The legislative platform was sent to all the board members and staff, including our lobbyist. CSAC is not giving direction to counties on how to deal with the federal funding impacts. Each county is unique. They are requesting that HHSA and County Council work together, and then any support that CSAC can provide, that they're there for you. Over half of our legislative representatives at the state level have been two years or less. So what is happening right now is we're getting a lot of bills that are spot bills. They don't have the detail that we normally see at this point in time. So that's making things a little bit challenging. But besides that, thank you to staff and to the Chair and Vice Chair for all their work in making the Legislative Workshop so successful on Friday. And basically, that's my update. Thank you.
Great, thank you Supervisor and everybody else. That would take us to public comments. So this would be the opportunity to address the board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda. No action can be taken unless provided by Government Code Section 54954.2. Do we have a public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Elia Salinas.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I am, I am here in person instead of, I was going to do this by Zoom, but I chose to put it on public record, as well as be able to see the faces of you Board of Supervisors when I'm making a comment. The Chair of the Board of Supervisors runs the meetings. The Chair of the Supervisors does not run San Benito County. There are five elected officials, and any decisions that are being made must be public processed, and not an order from the Chair. I've become, I've come before you numerous times, and the morale of the staff is very low. It is worse now, and it's getting worse daily. The Chair instructed the Board of Supervisors not to use this building as their office. So, not that they were using it, but it came directly from the Chair and says, "Stop using it as an office." Supervisors have business to do, and they come here, and they do have to talk to staff at times. You can't give all the other supervisors instructions that this is not their office, yet the Chair took it upon himself, for the first time in history, to take an employee's parking spot and turn it into his own personal-for-the-chair-only spot. Twenty-four seven. He came here and threw a tantrum and yelled at staff because somebody was parked in the parking spot. That is his and his only alone. Not only did he yell at staff, he threw an object that went at his hand and made a mess, and he didn't clean it up. He walked away, yelling.
How can I say point of order?
No, excuse me, this is my time, sir.
It's made up. You can't just get up here and make things up.
Sir, this is my time.
This is completely made up.
I am calling you on your actions, sir.
I'm speaking, you can briefly respond. Okay.
You can deny all you want. Now you've caused, you've caused this to become a conversation. It is very well-known. People talk, sir, and they're tired of your behavior. You're hostile. You are intimidating staff. What it's going to cost, it's going to allow these individuals to go look for a job somewhere else, and we're going to lose independent, great employees.
Thank you.
Next in chambers, Victoria Montoya.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is, oh, my name is Victoria Montoya. I am a board member of the San Benito Health Foundation, and this is one of the workers with me.
Hi, good morning. My name's Anna Yeli-Frestro. I'm the Director of Quality and Population Health at San Benito Health Foundation.
And we're here to invite the board members and anyone in public to attend our function. On February the 28th, we have every year called the Tooth Fairy, where-
Give kids, give kids a smile.
Give kids a smile. I call it Tooth Fairy. Okay. Anyway, I'm inviting anyone that's interested in passing the word and visiting our clinic on the 28th from three to seven. We'll have children, we have activities for them. And so anyone in here that's never been there is invited. And so, especially our representative. So that's all out the announcement that I'm making, because we do it every year, and it's fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in chambers, Tammy Aviles.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. I'm Tammy Aviles, and I am with the Friends of the San Benito County Free Library, and I am here to, again, extend an invite to our afternoon tea with the Friends at Ridge Mark on March 16th. And it is our big fundraiser of the year, so I hope everyone can join us. And it's from two to four in the afternoon, and it will be an afternoon tea, and it should be a fun afternoon. I'm also on the Board of Seniors Council, and I just wanted to say thank you, Supervisor Satello, for what you said. You know, San Benito County, we, the Seniors Council, we're working on, it's called a playbook for the Master Plan for Aging, which has come down from the state. And there are work groups, and there's not, organizations and volunteers just working to try to put this together, so that we have a plan for San Benito County and the ever-growing, including me, population of, you know, older adults. But that's it for today. Thank you so much.
Next in chambers, Steve Umpley.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. In late September, an expert in a Georgia court testified that he had examined Dominion voting systems in five states. And in each case, he found the system encryption keys stored in plain text in the database, along with common administrator password. This condition was reported by a test lab in 2010, but after fourteen years, the vulnerability remained. An attacker who obtains the keys and passwords from one county can use the same method in any other county where this vulnerability exists. If the defect exists in five out of five states tested, what can be said about the remaining twenty-three states that use Dominion? Such blockbuster election news, released only five weeks before Election Day, should have dominated the headlines for weeks, but it didn't. How many people here even heard of this? An attacker with the encryption keys might leave little or no trace. In my experience on PayPal's payment risk team, I marvelled at the resourcefulness and determination of the fraudsters. They're highly sophisticated, surprisingly motivated, and often well-coordinated. If the discoverer doesn't intend to exploit a vulnerability, they'll sell their knowledge to someone who does. If you believe this motivation applies only to money, but not to votes, I beg you to reconsider. In January of last year, a Lodi City Council member, the certified winner of a prior election, was convicted of election fraud. A citizens' watchdog group identified a single-family residence with over forty registered voters. After presenting their complaint to the county sheriff, the ensuing investigation identified seventy or more fraudulent ballots, all known fraudulent ballots past signature verification. The county's fraud preventive measures failed. The county's fraud detection measures also failed. It is interesting to note that this candidate took fourth place out of four in the in-person voting, but managed to overcome his deficit using mail-in ballots. We have similar reports from many states around the country. In each case, we have a county-level contest in which unsophisticated techniques were used to stuff ballots. Do such things happen at the state or federal level? The methods employed at state level would be more sophisticated, and therefore, more difficult to detect. Technology and transparency don't play well together. Auditability is key in our elections. Understanding by the average voter is key. Voter ID, hand counting, in-person voting, and Election Day not election season is a good idea for the sake of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one on Zoom. Valerie, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes.
Oh, thank you very much, and good morning, everybody. I was very excited to hear the progress on working with the updating the senior plan for San Benito County. And hopefully, that comes out to be successful and moved forward. So many of the different studies that are done, or accommodations to state mandates, are kind of just, the research is done, and then it's set aside. But the National Parks and Recreation Association has been doing also a lot of work considering the aging in America, and the aging here in San Benito County is reflective of that same situation. So I just wanted to put in my two cents to say thank you to all those working on the Senior Council for moving positive directions in, to accommodate our seniors in San Benito County. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes general public comment.
Yeah, I would like to briefly respond, as I'm allowed to do. Can I ask our CAO, Henny Ring, do I have a parking spot specifically for myself?
No, you do not.
And there's a supervisor parking spot back there. Can you confirm whether I had anything to do with that?
No, you did not.
And have I ever come in this building and been hostile and yelled at employees over a parking spot or anything else, and thrown things?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just, I want to make a comment that we, you know, I understand people can get up here and make public comments, but to just make defamatory comments about somebody that are completely false just does a disservice to this community. And there's one person in particular that has a pattern of doing this. And I would like to look into what, what we're allowed, you know, when it comes to, you could just come up here and claim somebody's breaking the law essentially with a hostile workplace allegation. There's other laws that you could just make up that somebody's breaking, which is just completely false. What can we do about that as public officials? Because it's really just disgusting behavior.
I'm afraid not a lot. You know, there's freedom of expression, and this is basically a public forum for that. That said, you can respond.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That'll take us to the-
Mr. Chair, if I can-
Yeah, yes.
Add to it. You know, it is unfortunate that, for all of us here, we, you all come here early, spend your time to get here, to hear factual information. And it's unfortunate that some people take advantage of that through public comment. They can spill whatever lies they want. We had this happen in the past, and the person that did this ended up having to pay the city, if they ever did, thirty thousand dollars for lies. They were ordered to pay the city thirty thousand dollars by the court for lies that were spreading. But it's unfortunate. I just want everyone here to understand, public comment is not factual comment. It's just, we have to sit here and listen to some of this outrageous things that are put out here. Factual information is, as we go through the agenda. So I just want everyone to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll take us to consent agenda. Would any Supervisors like to pull anything from consent? Hearing done. Do we have a public comment for consent?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, Elia?
Thank you. Item 1.6 regarding the contract for Baker Tilly for fire feasibility study. It was my understanding that this has already been done. I thought there was a contractor that was already hired during the last session. There was, there was talks. And I understand that the committee only consists of elected officials, and you're going to hire or get a feasibility study. We have had here in chambers, the public has heard from different organizations, including Cal Fire, and where it was not feasible to go with Cal Fire. So I don't know what more you can do, other than you're working on establishing a fire district. Is that what this feasibility study is going to be? Or is this feasibility study going to be with regards to what the county owns, the city of Hollister? The numbers don't change. So the numbers have been presented to Hollister. Unfortunately, the CAO at the time left and was, was not able to give notice and was not able to, I don't know, just drop the ball. And it fell on the Board of Supervisors later, months later, on what to do. But you can't have a fire feasibility study because these elected officials decided to do this without also having the experts on the table. Why is it that the Hollister Fire Department, who also has a contract, that's what this is all about, why are they not at the table? They're the experts on what really needs to go on in San Benito County. And I just want to be reassured, be reassured that somehow you're going to bring in the Fire Department to help with this issue, because it doesn't make any sense that there are these six individuals who have absolutely zero experience. The only one that has anything is, is Freels in San Juan Batista, and I don't even know if he sits on this committee. He's the only firefighter, and you have no firefighters on it.
I have no other public comment.
Can I please entertain a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a first and a second. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We will move on to the regular agenda. For each regular agenda item, we'll have the staff report, public opportunity to address the board, and consideration by the board. 2.1 will be our interim CAO, Henny Ring, adopting, we're going to talk about adopting a resolution approving a new seal for the county of San Benito. I guess that would be Dulce. Sorry about that.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. As we hit February, we're wrapping up our 150th celebration, and I just want to thank the ad hoc, which composed of Dom and B, who helped do, get a lot of the events. At the beginning of the year, the Board did allocate funding to put together some events in celebration of the 150th. And I want to announce out, we actually came under budget of the hundred thousand. We only spent thirty, around thirty-five thousand. So, which is really great. Thanks to the great stewardship of our limited resources. So before you today, for consideration, is that the county seal that we were using for the 150th, which is up on the screen. If, there's a resolution attached for the board's consideration on implementing as our permanent seal. There would be a process that we would have to go through and submit to the Secretary of State and make it our official seals. We did reach out to many departments to see what their, their costs would be to implement a county seal. And departments have different seals. For example, the sheriff has their own unique seal, so they wouldn't be impacted by this. So does elections, Health and Human Services, and a lot of our bigger departments. So really, the, the main ones that would be using the seal would be like our public works vehicles, county administration, and, and it would be the official county seal. So for that, when I- So for that, one item on here is your consideration of implementing this as an official county seal. And then the second item would be to commemorate that the 150th, we have had discussions with the Arts Council about doing a mural to wrap up the celebration of the 150th, gathering public input on, on what they would want and sourcing an artist to do this for us. We were considering the lobby as an option. And that's other, that's another item on, on this agenda item for, for direction if the board so chooses to move forward with that. The cost would be approximately anywhere from eight to 10. So staff would recommend if the board so chooses to move forward to allow up to the 10,000. There was also a second request for county. Reach is actually working on a mural at the historical park to also mark the 150th of the county on the new, brand new county bathrooms that were built out there. And they were able to obtain a grant from the Arts Council and they, they requested a match from, from the county. So that would be another. But, but other than that, I, I don't have anything else to report on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dulce. We'll go to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And on Zoom, I have Valerie, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. This is really exciting to see the logo upgraded. In heraldry, the basic tenet is that once the contents of a logo or an emblem is established, then those basic elements can be embellished, changed, and moved around according to the will of the owner and the artist. So the emblems that, the emblem for the 150th has all those things. It has the mission, it has the pinnacles, it has the valleys. And there's one more thing in there. Da, 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 da. I forget. Anyway. So what I'm saying is that I think that the board supervisors would have complete license to approve that as according to the rules of heraldry. So, but it is costly, as Dulce did note. So I think how you're going to implement that and exactly in what ways will be kind of important for you to decide. But the most public way of seeing that emblem is on the vehicles that drive around. So that's probably public works would be well validated. So anyway, my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the board for questions or comments. Supervisor Crowe, would you like to start?
Sure. So I totally support the change to the new logo. The same comments I'm going to have that I had before is, you know, how is this going to be rolled out? What's the cost? It sounds like because we were under budget on the 150th celebration, is that money going to be reallocated for the cost of the new logo implementation, which is kind of like a plus because of the 150th and you guys being so frugal of being able to come under budget, that now we actually have a little money set aside that could help that. The other thing is, I would say the same thing with the mural. I'm, I'm, I still have issue with the future of this room and the lobby and how it all kind of ties together. So I would really like a presentation of maybe what the future could be so that the mural, if it is in the lobby, could be tied in with some improvements that we previously approved in the budget, I believe, but also recognizing that we do have some major budget challenges that are coming our way. And so I kind of feel like I need a little bit more of like a plan. What's the plan? What's the cost? Pricing it out, that would make me feel a little more confident. Also, have we done any outreach? I know we and employees have talked about the new logo, but have we done any outreach to get feedback from the public? That, those are my only comments. Thank you.
So I know Riden Rosemary is not here today, but I do know she did a while ago push out both logos and did ask for public input on which ones the public did like better. And on social media, she got a, I don't remember the exact percentages, but we got more votes for the, the new logo and, and there was certainly comments. As far as the cost, it would be, we wouldn't initially invest everything into switching the new logo. The only cost would be, or as, as business cards run out or we would order new ones with the new logo. So it would be like our regularly expenses for, for supplies that way. And then we would just implement in our, we already do use them on some of the letter heads, so it would just be using the new logo on letter heads, which isn't my substantial cost.
Totally support that, and that's exactly how I would expect it to be ruled out. My only added comment is about the state display for San Benito County.
We no longer have.
We don't? They took them all down?
Yeah, and they, they made us pick it up, I want to say, two years ago.
Oh, that's too bad. Are they going to bring it back? Because if they do, we could do a really nice 150th and with the new logo. I liked, I'm sorry, my son, you know, doing the state, you know, tour when you're with your eighth grade child. I was more of a child at the tour than my son was. But the, the displays were so fun to compare each one. And ours really needed some support, and this is a great opportunity. If they are going to bring them back, I would, I would make a theme around the new logo. I'll follow up on that bit.
Supervisor Velazquez.
Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions. I agree, if you phase it in, no problem. I support the new logo, looks good. I'm not really supporting the idea of murals. I just, we don't get enough traffic through here. I think you justify that. I'm just not going to support that part, but I do support the new logo.
Supervisor Zenger. Supervisor Zenger, I should have kicked it off to you probably because you were involved with the committee. So.
That's all right.
But go right ahead.
That's all right. Really quickly, just so I understand, Supervisor Crowe, could you elaborate? I don't really know what you're talking about with the state displays. You want to give me some background on that one?
Sorry, I got to take the cough drop out of my mouth.
Okay.
Well, I can come back to you. No. So it used to be when in the state capital, you go down to the lower level under the rotunda and there would be a, a large window and each county had a window assigned to them. And ours had our logo, it had some stuff about pinnacles, it had all kinds of ag. But it was very, very aged. I think it was put together possibly in the 60s or 70s. I mean, it looked old. My son, who was young at the time, he, he gave it a thumbs down. I have the photo of him. But we see how it could be very good for tourism. We could use it as a kickoff on how and why to bring people to San Benito County. So I, I just, I'm wondering if it's going to be coming back.
Okay, well, appreciate that. Yeah, I was just, I just, I wasn't aware of that, so interesting. Yeah, I do obviously support the logo change, and I don't remember the percentages either, but it was pretty overwhelming that the logo update was preferred.
When we did the public, our P I O did push out public input on that.
Yeah, and the rollout is, like we said, basically costless because we're just, as things get old, we get the new logo on the new things. I mean, a couple pieces of paper here on the wall, it's, it's not going to be much. So I support that definitely. Now regarding the, first, the, the Reach Grant Match, what would that, would you do the cost on that?
That was $1,500, and that is to match a grant that they already received. And it's to, to, to help them do a bigger piece of, I guess, more detail work at, at the historical park on the bathroom. And that would be, that would go to Reach, so we wouldn't manage that. They would manage the mural and from start to finish.
Got it. Yeah, I would support the, the grant match of that. Not much anyway, so I would support that. Regarding the art, the mural suggestion, so I'm, I'm, I'm a supporter of the arts, I'm a big supporter of the arts. I know some people don't see as much value in it, but I do think there's a lot of value in art in the community. My, my hangup is, and I, and I voiced this when we, when we discussed this previous, is just the location of a mural in this building. Like Supervisor Velazquez said, there's just not a whole lot of the community that walks in the lobby here. There just isn't. And so I would really be open to a mural or a sculpture or something, preferably somewhere else in the community. I just don't know where that would be. I'd be open to ideas, but I would, I would definitely be open to taking a small piece of this budget where we, you know, use a third of it. Take a small piece of it and support some kind of public art somewhere. I just don't know if this is the, the right location. But at the same time, I say that and I don't really have any better ideas. So I'm, I'm not sure what to do with that one. But that's where I'm at with the, the artwork. And I think, I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Supervisor Satello.
Thank you. Yeah, I am supportive as well of the new logo. I love it. I think it's really beautiful and I think it really represents our community and kind of where we are today. I'm also in favor of doing the Reach Grant Match for $1,500. And I'm supportive of the mural as well. I think it, it adds value. And I think that as we're focusing on tourism, I think it could be something that kind of helps support that. I don't know, possibly location, maybe historical park or somewhere that is kind of a county property, but I do agree that it needs to be in a visible kind of a location. So, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Great comments. Question, what is the plan for the art on the bathroom?
That's being led with, by Reach.
But what is the plan? What is the art? What would the art be? I don't want to just put money towards something without, it's a county park facility.
Yeah, they had, they had discussed. They had discussed using the 150th logo and using, kind of tying it back to our history of canning and different agriculture, like the, what are they called? Stamps that they, that they use for the, the fruit and vegetables. So, so there is a rough draft of a plan.
Okay.
The fruit labels, I think what you're talking about, the old fruit labels.
Yes.
That were on the boxes.
Correct. Thank you.
And who would be the artist? Okay.
That's being led by Reach, so I think they, they still have to go through the process, but they wanted to see if the county would be willing to have funds so that, so that they could determine maybe a bigger scale than they, they were originally planning.
Yeah, I mean, I would personally just like to see more on what the concept would be before. I know it's relatively smaller dollar amounts, but as everybody knows, I'm kind of a stickler on even these sorts of dollar amounts. And then as far as the, the seal goes, I do certainly support adopting the seal. I've been very supportive of that all along, taking out, of course, the 150th anniversary at the bottom. We've put a lot of time and energy and money into it and it's really great design. I think it reflects the county well. Also, the current logo, I know people get attached to things, but like everything, everything gets outdated at some point and the current logo is relatively outdated, even though we of course appreciate whoever put that together many years ago. And then the, I really like hearing that we're going to gradually roll out the use of the logo and the seal. So when we, essentially when we buy new shirts and new equipment, new materials that would incorporate the logo, that's the point when we would use the new seal and logo as opposed to replacing items just for the public, you know, just for the sake of using the seal on items that don't need to be replaced. So that's definitely responsible use of taxpayer money. And then the mural part, you know, I, I, I agree with the, I certainly wouldn't want to have a mural, spending that much money on a mural inside the admin building, I think somewhere. And I also think personally, because we only have so many dollars to spend on these sorts of things, I also support public art, but I would just prefer, you know, especially if there's a board majority to do, already doing a historical art piece at the historical park, I would prefer to put that money toward, we've talked about pinnacles and home of Pinnacles National Park and really, you know, setting aside those dollars for something more in line with that is, because there's only so many tax dollars to go around for art. So I could support a mural or some sort of signage that if, if we're, if we're committed to something that's tourism related and specifically, I would hope pinnacles, but I can't support just doing 150th mural, you know, for the sake of doing it. And then anything else here? I think that's, I think that's it for my end. So I don't know, we have two separate items to basically approve. Oh, sorry.
Can I add to that? Could you just, you sparked a thought?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Can we possibly have Reach and staff come back, maybe with the Arts Council and do a presentation of, could we take the, the grant money that they're working on with the bathrooms, not that I want it on the bathrooms, but tie it together with some sort of art project out at the park, at the historical park? And that kind of be with what you're saying, you know, theming it with the home of the pinnacles, maybe a little advertisement there to draw people to the pinnacles? Maybe they could present something that was a little more detailed so that we could understand the cost and how we could tie maybe the two together? Just a thought.
Yeah, I'd be open to that. Obviously want to keep it relatively brief probably considering the dollar amounts involved, but I would certainly be open to that unless there's others that have thoughts on that or the seal. We do have, so we have two separate items. We have adoption of the seal, so I would just first entertain a motion if there was one to adopt the new county seal with.
Through the resolution.
Through the resolution. I apologize. Let me just pull that up just to make it official here. Sorry about that.
So I move to approve the resolution for the new county seal.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second. We have a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Crowe?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five, zero vote, motion passes.
Great. So that would bring us to the, sort of two items in one. One of those items would be the, basically some sort of art at the historical park for a $1,500 grant match. And the second item, of course, was the mural concept in the admin building. We had some discussion about both items. Does somebody want to kick it off to try to find consensus on the first one, which would be, I think, the historical park?
Yeah, well, just, just, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I understand, the way the art would work is it'd almost be like an R F, R F P where they would, there'd be a few artists that would submit, this for their historical park Reach Grant, they would submit, I guess, like rough mockups of what they would do and then they would select from there how the art would be, I think, just to clarify like what it's going to be. I think that's usually the process, right? Is that right?
Yeah, that's how Jennifer explained.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, and I don't know exactly, I guess Reach would be making that call though because it's there. So I guess they would get the submissions of the, the rough layouts and then they would, I guess, from there either pick one and tweak it in whatever way they want. Just to clarify the question of what it's going to be. That's from what I understand, that's how it works. I don't really know how to frame this as far as combining the two. Supervisor Crowe, you, you want to elaborate a little bit for me on what the idea was there? A little confused.
So i- in talking just about the, it would be approving the grant match with more detail coming back of what maybe the submissions are so that we could give some feedback to Reach and tying it in with a potential, I guess I'd say, tourism, home of the pinnacles. Maybe we can work collaboratively with Reach on this grant and tying in maybe at the same time a design of what a mural or some sort of advertisement at the historical park would be for the new logo and, and tourism supporting. That's kind of where I was going. Or we can treat, treat them separate. Do the, the $1,500 match with more detail coming in from Reach on what that would look like so that Supervisor Cosmiki can see, you know, what are we actually funding? I completely agree, we need more information. We can't, I don't feel we can approve it without seeing it. But then maybe separately having a same sort of R F P for what that mural could look like out at the historical park.
Thank you. Further conversation on that?
I'm just kind of confused on that. So the historical park, the match is a $1,500 match.
Correct.
Which I'm okay with. I do agree that we should have a look at what that is in the end. The other part was the mural here, and I'm not opposed to mural, but just I'd like to see it where people can see it and maybe working with the art commissions or maybe the city has a location we can work with them on so the public can see it. And I, I do agree it should be something leaning more towards tourism of the Pinnacles National Park or something. And I'm all for that. So I just, I want to make sure, you know, I'm a big, big supporter of the arts. I just, I want people to see the arts and that's my issue here. So if we can work that out, I think maybe bring that back.
Yeah, I could, oh, sorry. Interrupted.
What I was going to say, I'll make a motion, we could probably split those up. I'll make a motion then to support the, the grant match, considering we have some kind of input on, on what the piece would be. And I think that would be one motion and then we'll get to the next, the next part.
I'd second that.
We have a first, we have a second. No further questions, comments, all those in favor, roll call vote. We have a first, we have a second. No further questions, comments. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Kuro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
And then the second item would be the concept of a mural or some sort of art separate from that. Any recommendations, suggestions then based off the conversation? Supervisor Satello?
Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, it seems like if, if this is kind of the direction we're going, don't we kind of need to figure out exactly kind of what we're thinking of, the dollar amount that we want? So like it'd be a max of, I don't know, I heard $10,000 early or something like that. Where we would put out for an RFP for somebody to, and then decide location. It seems like there's a lot of decisions to be made. But I guess maybe the question right now is, do we support this idea of kind of moving forward in more of a, you know, kind of a concrete or more of a motion where, you know, we're going to put, okay, what exactly, what are kind of are we looking for? Doesn't need to be, I mean, maybe just like Supervisor Zanger said earlier, a mural or a statue or something like that, a piece of artwork. And, you know, give kind of a dollar amount. So then you kind of put it out to the community to put that out for an RFP and see what kind of comes back. I don't know. Just a thought to if we want to put it in more of a little bit of guidelines with it.
Yeah, and I, if I may, I mean, my thought basically would be, you know, we're going down this road promoting Pinnacles. $10,000 might not even be enough, frankly, if we're going to do some sort of monument sign along the road or a mural that's, you know, my, my thought would basically just be to table that portion of it to perhaps bring it, you know, we have our tourism advisory committee coming up, going to be talking about Pinnacles. There's other avenues. We could maybe just get Arts Council's input on how to incorporate this into the plan to promote Pinnacles and not maybe just put the, push the brakes a little bit on this for now. As far as the eight to 10th or the $10,000 amount.
I totally agree to the tourism advisory committee and having them kick it around and come back with some ideas.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
One question, sir. Is that still kind of on the theme of the 150th?
Well, from where I'm at, it would be not necessar- no, no, I think we're already doing that, you know. So I, I, I just think again, we have limited dollars and, and it would be basically toward promoting Pinnacles.
Yeah, and I, I, I've made.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree. And I would just say, considering that the 150th logo was very Pinnacles based, it's sort of like, I mean, if we're promoting Pinnacles and our tourism, that's sort of, you know, we were kind of celebrating all that with the 150th anyways. So I don't think it necessarily needs to say 150th on it or anything. I think it's sort of, can still be somewhat related, but it doesn't need to be specific to the 150th.
Yeah, and internally, that's what we discussed. What, what could it be? Do we want the community to provide input? And then, so we, we, I, we could work with the Arts Council and kind of get public input if that's what you guys want. And then we can bring what, what we're getting back from the community. And propose a few locations potentially.
I mean, I'd be open to getting, if staff can get some input from Arts Council and, and and perhaps they could be incorporated into the tourism discussion, the tourism advisory discussion as well. Perhaps they could come to the March meeting if they, if they're available, something along those lines and then go from there.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I'm seeing head nods. Do we necessarily need to vote or we're okay on consensus on that? I think we're okay. Thank you Dulce for the presentation. Good conversation. That would take us to, and we did do public comment on that, that would take us to item 2.2, accept presentation regarding road project status and provide staff direction on potential road improvements.
All right. Good morning Chair, Board and members of the public. I'm Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator. And we'll be going through road project update for the past month or so. While there aren't a lot of major changes during the past month, I do want to discuss kind of some minor changes and some things that occurred, especially recently. So for the projects, which I'll scroll through kind of quickly, we'll talk about number three in a moment. Projects 1, 2, 3, excuse me, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7. As a little bit of recap, the board designated about $4 million to help repave and reconstruct the roads that are kind of parallel to 156. Coming from San Juan Batista essentially to kind of Union Road near Hollister. And we've done, we've completed the reconstruction part. What we're waiting for now is for temperatures to increase to about 70 degrees. And then once we reach 70 degrees, then we can actually finish the slurry seal. So most of the work's completed, I think up to the tune of about 3.1 million. And we've been working with the city of San Juan Batista on their sewer project to kind of team with them. They've actually paid for some of those costs and things as well. In addition to our county's $4 million. But yeah, so since the temperatures reach 70 degrees, then we can finish the, the slurry seal for those segments. And, and then finish the striping as well. Regarding number three, which is Sealy Avenue. Contractors actually completed that project, looks really good. There's three items that we're going to complete. We have about 22,000 remaining in the budget. So we're going to be essentially doing some temporary dike work. One of the homeowners actually requested a dike, which dike is just a small asphalt curb essentially. And so we worked with one of the property owners to actually install a section of dike that we all thought would help things. It actually, according to the property owner, didn't, did not help things during the last rains. And so we're going to remove that. The cost is kind of minor to remove it, but in addition to that, we're going to be installing another dike further up the road to the east per two property owners' requests. And we're confident that that will ultimately improve that work. And we also have to clean out a pipe up there. We also might be able to just get our road crew to clean out the pipe. So, so we have about 20K and I think we can accomplish those items for Sealy Avenue. Otherwise, that project is basically complete. So then we'll jump over to, let me just go back here. Well, okay. We'll do Fairview Road first. So Fairview Road from Santa Anna Creek to Hillcrest Road. Just not quite all the way into the Santana Ranches development, but a portion of it. We completed that work. And we actually, over the last week, completed the survey monuments. So there's monuments in the street that surveyors used to locate properties and boundaries. And so whenever we are aware that we damage those or remove them or the road construction is going to affect those, they're just, they're usually brass devices, I'll say, and they're in these little valve boxes. Like just brass plates, basically, a little mini brass plates. So long story short, when we affect them per the Survey Map Act, we have to put them back. So we actually put those back and we also helped a water valve that needed to be raised as well. So that project's complete. And that used up most of our SB1 funds that were accumulated over the past few years. Now we're starting to accumulate more SB1 funds to the tune of about $240,000 a month. So we'll be coordinating some of those things with the ad hoc in the next couple of weeks on how to use some of those funds moving forward. Union Road Bridge. Okay. So the bridge itself will be completed and open to traffic mid-March, which is very good news. And we'll wait a couple of months because we actually have a little more paving to do. So a lot of projects, you actually do your final lift of paving after some other things are done, because sometimes the road gets a little scraped up and things. But we're going to open up the road, the bridge to traffic in mid-March. We're actually coordinating that event with some supervisors and legislators and everybody. So it'll be open to traffic then. And then a couple of months later, after we do a little bit more work on the perimeter, we're going to actually finish the paving, which is about two inches, inch and a half of asphalt. So by May, it'll be paved out. You also might see some additional work in the creek. We're going to be demoing the old bridge. And we'll also be per our environmental agencies, we'll be planting some plants to help the, the wildlife and critters in the creek. So we'll be restoring some of the creek that we've damaged per plan with the bridge construction. So that'll be kind of ongoing through the summer. And by the end of summer, we should be finished with everything, but getting close to that. So this little piece right here, it's 150 feet, number nine. It's adjacent to the bridge project because Caltrans only pays for so much roadway improvements. And so we've already met with a contractor, a different contractor, well, a contractor, I should say, to finish that last 150 feet. We have the budget, it's allocated. We just have to wait to do that last little piece. So yeah, that's good news on Union Road Bridge. Shore Road. So we're having a sit walk with the contractor this Friday. They have the contracts. We've had our pre-construction meeting. So they're scheduled to start March 10th. That's going to be about a four-month project. So there's going to be traffic, you know, delays during the day. A lot of times we're going to be going down into one lane traffic, kind of like we did on Fairview over the last few years when we had to rebuild Fairview. So there's going to be delays, March, April, May, June. But the good news is from Fraser Lake to San Felipe, the real piece that really needs attention is going to be reconstructed there, including a turn lane that was kind of partially paid for by an applicant. There was an applicant around 22, 2250 Shore Road. They, the application to build a, a building. And so as part of that planning and approval process, they're actually contributing about $50,000 to help put a turn pocket in there. And it costs a little bit more than that, but they're going to contribute for that. So there'll be a turn pocket just to make things a little bit safer for that one building that's being constructed. So that's part of the plan as well for Shore Road. San Juan Highway, we did complete striping about a month and a half ago. We had a little bit of nice weather. And the road work, which is mainly near Anzar High School. I don't think it'll go all the way to Teller Farms because we have about a million dollars-ish to use. But that'll start around June, mid-June, when the school's out to reconstruct the part by Anzar Road because it has some structural issues on the road there. Wright Road, met with the contractor. They're going to be providing some prices, hopefully with about $3 million budget to complete Wright Road from Buena Vista down to Highway 25. Have to stretch our dollars a little bit, but we'll, we'll see what the, the numbers come out on that regarding the contractor's estimates. And, but they're looking, they're putting together a cost estimate for that project. Coal Road, a little bit of good news on Coal Road. We actually received the 95% design plans. We still are working on the, there's a wall that has kind of been part of the delay. So we're still working on the wall design or the consultants are, but we actually received the road plans. And so that's a big step on coal. We just have to get the wall plan finished. And then we'll see where our budget is from that. That's actually going to be an SB1 funded project as well. And then San Juan Canyon Road. So May, June, we should be starting construction with San Juan Canyon, six miles of road from Salinas Road all the way up the hill. We are doing a little more surveying on pipes because we've looked at a few more pipes that are in not great shape for pipes under the road essentially. And so they're going to be doing a little more surveying out there. But we still plan to start construction, May, June for that project. Fairview Road. So as I mentioned before, this is, this is another SB1 project and we kind of have to wait till SB1 funds come in. And so Aquistapace Road to Fallon, it's about a mile, less than a little more than a mile. Is a segment of Fairview that would have to come towards the end of the summer when some funds are coming from SB1. SB1 essentially is a gas tax and we also get vehicle license fees. And they put that together and they give that to the county. So that's what SB1 funds are. So they started, I believe in 2017 where they, the state had to give agencies those funds, which is a very good thing. So we've had that fund seven or eight years, kind of when Measure G passed. I think Measure G passed was 2018. So Trespinos Roadway Improvements, summer 2025. So those, those are essentially going to be built through our JOC project program. So we have six on-call contractors. And they're all Class 8 contractors. You've heard of a lot of them. And so, because, sorry, I'm sorry. I'll talk.
You're good. Just do your thing.
All right. So it's essentially resurfacing and striping for kind of, I'll say two U shapes on the, essentially the east and west side of San Juan Batista, or excuse me, Trespinos. So we'll be able to start that in the summer. Let's see. Union Road. Okay. So the main stretch of Union Road from Highway 156 down to where we finished from a previous, I believe, Measure G project. It's roughly three miles, design's on track to go out to bid this, just to start construction, I should say, this summer. So yeah, that's, that's on track as well. Fraser Lake Road. Fraser Lake is, will probably be a JOC project as well because it's basically 1.8 miles right from shore all the way out to where the road gets okay, because there was a previous project where the road, it's in somewhat decent shaved up for about 1.8 miles. And so so we just have to reconstruct it and re-stripe it. It's a straight stretch. It's like perfect JOC program. And when I, it, when we use JOC, it just, it shaves off about two or three months of bidding and things because all the JOC contractors have already gone through a bid process. And essentially they've said, our profit margins are going to be X. And then the lowest profit margins for those, the six contractors that were, were the contract, they had the, kind of the six lowest profit margins for projects. So essentially JOC is you get time and materials, plus you get a profit margin. And you've already gone through a bid process. Therefore, you essentially can get a task order like Fraser Lake Road and say, repave this 1.8 miles of road. We'll give it to one or two different contractors. And say, okay, give us your bid for this 1.8 miles and then we can build it. It's for, it's kind of the more straightforward projects. It's a very good program. Okay, Shore Road, Fallon Road, still going through the design process. We're starting to coordinate with utilities. There's PG&E poles and some communication lines and some fun things at that intersection. So we're hoping to get through all that process in the fall. Salinas Road, also in the fall. That's really, the challenge with Salinas Road is it's, a lot of it's concrete. It's an old concrete trail for, you know, horse and buggies and things and stagecoaches. And so we'll be able to start that in the fall as well as Sienna Ga. We just received a, a proposal from the design consultant just a few days ago to kind of wrap up that and do some extra wall design things. And so I'll present the, the amendments during the next board meeting. Or excuse me, based on the schedule, it's probably two board meetings from now. But anyways, there's an amendment, I think it was about 270K to, to finish up the design for that project. And then I don't know if we want to construct these in the fall, but they'll be ready for construction in the fall. So I think that's about it. And yes, so a little bit of a side note, a little note from the board's previous direction. And I'll discuss this with the roads ad hoc, but we did find about 240,000 plus or minus for striping, like to do striping right away. So I want to discuss that a little bit with the roads ad hoc first to see, just to make sure we're on the same page with where we should do some striping, just some safety improvements. But that was one of the previous requests from the board and I'll pause there for questions.
You go to public comment, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board. We can start with Supervisor Satello.
Thank you. I'm just curious. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate the update. And great to hear that Shore Road is just a few weeks away. Curious, on the Shore Road, and then I know it says Fraser Lake Road a little bit left after, will they kind of be like Shore Road and then Fraser Lake?
So the, the funding for Fraser Lake, assuming the budget gets approved July 1st, I think it kicks in July 1st on Fraser Lake. So.
So Shore should be done by then, right? Theoretically.
Yeah, well, yeah, around, so they should be right.
Right next to each other. Okay.
Yes.
And what about the Union Road? I, I start to worry a little bit when I see kind of all these kind of arterial roads that are going to be under construction at the same time. Will Union Road, that three-mile stretch from 156, you know, on Union, will that be at the same time as Shore and Fraser Lake? Or are we kind of trying to time those so that they'll be a little bit different?
So Shore, or excuse me, Union will come probably a little bit after Fraser Lake, just because Fraser Lake is.
Okay, but I mean, at least Shore will be open. They can get to 25 and there will be, okay.
That's correct.
And then I was just curious, on Union Road, 100 feet near the bridge portion that you're talking about, is that, so if I'm on the current bridge, would that be kind of to the right of it?
It's on the east. Yeah, so it's kind of, it's near Southside Road.
It's tor- it's going towards, okay.
Towards, if you're heading towards 25, if you're on the bridge and you head towards 25, it's the last segment of that piece of road.
Kind of where that curve kind of is. Okay. So when will that be done? Or when is that going? So my, my concern is that it's, I feel like it's a. So when will that be done? Or when is that going? So my, my concern is that it's, I feel like it's a hazard right now. Like I know when I drive that, I have, I know that it's there, so I slow way down, but the striping all along, and it's pretty dark. And so I just worry about it being kind of a safety issue. And so just, I don't know what we can do to make it safer. Uh, like I said, hopefully a lot of people, you know, kind of know it's there and, and are cautious. But there's always that worry that somebody doesn't know it's there and could be a real issue.
For sure. And just to, for clarification, the old alignment is going to be abandoned. So we're kind of connecting to where the new striping takes over from a few years ago. So the older striping and the, some of this road issues that you're talking about, it actually just gets abandoned. And we kind of go on this new alignment at that Easterly piece. So I think it'll be a lot better.
So I guess the question, when will that hap, when are we abandoning the old striping?
Actually on, in mid-March.
Oh, okay. Fantastic. So that's not months down the road. That's not with that other, okay.
No, the, the final pavement payment is actually right near the bridge intersection, just because there's some things going on outside the bridge and some conform areas. Um, so yeah, but.
Okay, perfect. Then we've, okay, perfect. Um, and I was just wondering about, um, two additional things. One, if we have any feedback, um, regarding the software that we installed in the vehicles and, um, you know, that's evaluating the conditions of the road and, and if that's giving us any kind of information and what that's looking like. You don't need to report on it today, but just curious in the future, I'd love to, um, find out how that program is working and what it's doing. The other, um, area is, do we have anything that maps like hotspots of accident locations? Because I feel like there's a few areas in the county, especially the unincorporated area, that are kind of hotspots. And, um, and so how are we, are we mapping those? Are we, are we keeping tabs on those? And then what is our plan for addressing those to kind of make sure that as we're dealing with potholes and things like that, that definitely can be, um, safety issues, but there's also maybe some that have curve issues or whatever. I just think that there's, um, there are a few locations that we really need to do a better job and, and be proactive with. And so I just thought, I wonder if there's some type of a mapping tool. Maybe the sheriffs keep something like that, that we can start to map these things that happen, even if they're minor, but we start to know, okay, there's been 10 accidents in this location. Maybe we should do something about it.
Yeah. So I'll answer kind of both of those because they're a little bit tied together. So the RMT software, the vehicle software, believe it or not, the software folks are ready. Our wifi at the Public Works Yard and the wifi at RM, at RMA is, we don't have strong enough signals. So we actually have to install better wifi because what happens with the vehicles, they park at the Public Works Yard and they park at RMA. The devices are attached to the vehicles and they have to upload the data at the end of the day. Well, at both facilities, um, our wifi is severely lacking. So we actually need to install wifi first and then that technology will get activated. A year and a half ago, we've completed, um, a task and a report called a local roads safety program, which mapped, and I can send it to you if you want, all the local accident hotspots, um, throughout the county. And we actually, as a result of that, we applied for, well, we had two grants we were going to apply for. One was at Shore Road and Fraser Lake, because that's actually one of our major areas of accidents. And the second one was Fallon Road and Fairview. Fallon Road and Fairview, when we worked with the consultant, we were not even close, in a good way, in a bad way, to reaching the threshold where we'd get some funding because there weren't enough fatalities and accidents. Fraser Lake Shore Road, in a good way and a bad way, we were closer. We actually applied for the grant. But the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is the safety grant program, they said, sorry, you still don't have enough severe accidents at Shore and Fraser Lake, but we tried. But I can send you that report because it mapped pretty much all the, the big, you know, accidents areas in the county. And, um, to answer your other question, CHP kind of keeps, can, they keep the record of all the accidents and collisions. The county doesn't do that. But our consultants for that report, they reached out to CHP and the state and they obtained all the accident data and they created that report. It actually was also for San Juan Batista and the City of Hollister, the report. So, um, so I can just, I'll send it to the supervisor just so you have it because it's, it's pretty useful and it shows some of the information that you just mentioned.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
You bet. Supervisor, Supervisor Zanger, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, that's crazy. Not enough accidents on Fallon and Fairview. That's, uh, some of these state programs don't make a lot of sense to me. Um, so question, uh, Shore Road, I know you, you said we're sort of scheduled to start March 10th, but then there's also going to be a, a sidewalk with the contractor. Is there potential for that, during that sidewalk to, is that going to throw things back if there's something that isn't expected or anything like that?
No, it's mainly just to strategize some ditch clearing we need to do and, um, to actually, we pretty much on every project, right before we construct, we walk the whole project with the contractor, believe it or not. So it's just a step we do in the process, but it, it, it's just, it won't delay anything.
Great to hear, great to hear. Um, regarding the, the Fallon signal, do you think it'd be possible if, if you could email out to the board or to me, if the other board's not interested, the rest of the supervisors, I mean, uh, just what it's going to look like exactly. I know because they're doing like some, they're changing the road around and I know when, I think last time you talked about reverse curve, dog legs and everything. So if you could, if there's, if there is one, um, it'd be great to, to see that so I can kind of get an idea of, of what it's supposed to look like exactly.
I absolutely can. My only, um, suggestion is just to kind of keep it not to the public yet because it's still a draft. Um, so it is going to be the alignment, but if you could just not release it to the world just because it's still under design. But yeah, I'll send it to you. No problem.
Okay, great. The, the only other question I had was, um, just about some speed bumps, about the speed bump situation with, uh, Magalhade. Is there, I know we talked about rumble strips at one point. Is, what's the status there?
Yeah. So, um, once we have all the contracts from the Jock contractors, which is the final step in the Jock. So we've gone through the Jock program. Now they have to send us to sign contracts. Once we have that, then we'll be able to do, it was actually, um, Magalhade, Carav is actually getting speed bumps, uh, Buena Vista at the reverse curve. And also, uh, Four Corners. Even though the flashing stop signs at Fairview and Shore Road have helped quite a bit, we're going to put some rumble strips at that intersection as well. So those, actually those four locations are all getting rumble strips, um, just FYI. But so I guess we hope to get Jock contracts signed within a week or two. And then we can actually start putting out contracts. And so we'll just have one of the Jock contractors install the rumble strips at those four locations.
Great, great. That's great. Does that go for Kane Drive? Is that separate?
So Kane, and I apologize, I gave you the last, last minute email this morning, but, um, Kane Drive, let's see, there was five locations. The most northern location on Kane Drive, the neighbors said they don't want that speed bump. So now we have four locations. Out of the four locations, we still have one more location. We're waiting for the neighbors to confirm that they want the speed bump in front of their house. One thing that came out of the process is there's two, two and a half segments of Kane that need some pavement rehab. And so we agree, um, the county, and so we're going to combine the pavement rehab with those four speed bump locations and hopefully get a decent price. We actually did get a new price from the contractor. The five locations was 110,000. Still a bit high, but better. It was originally 140. It came down to 110,000, but now we're going to have four locations with a pavement rehab and we'll see how much budget we have. The, the CSA has about 120,000 of reserve funds total available. So we might have to do what we call a 218 special project process where we get more funds. We'll have to see what the, the cost is, but that's the status. We're going to combine pavement rehab with the speed bumps because we don't want to do the pavement rehab until we put the, you know, we want to do that first and then the speed bumps.
Right. That makes sense. Uh, but does that, does that push the project back if we include the, I mean, I understand that makes the most sense, but is that going to end up pushing it back?
It probably will. I mean, we could, um, it's, it's not such necessarily a scheduling thing because the contractors, all the Jock contractors, they want to work today. It's more of a funding. So we have to look at, let's just say that CSA has 120,000 max, but the contractors say, well, with all the pavement, it's going to be 180,000. So we have to figure out, because we got in trouble in the past, kind of going over our budget on CSA. So it's actually going to be more of a funding issue, I think, versus a scheduling issue. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah.
We have a new, we have to get a new construction estimate for the pavement rehab.
Okay.
See where we're at. So.
Okay. Well, yeah. I mean, whatever we can do to, to push it along. Cause I know, I think we started this Kane discussion like 19 months ago, and I know these things are the studies, they take time and, and I understand. So anything though, we can do to, um, not slow things down as much as possible is, is desired. Um, that's all.
Understood, understood.
Thank you. Great comments, questions. Supervisor Velasquez.
Thank you. Looking forward to sitting down with you on our ad hoc. When you do come, please bring all the contracts and all the information you can so we can have a long, deep conversation about the roads. Safety obviously is an issue here. We talked about the striping in the past. And I heard you say we have about 200 and something.
About 240,000, we think, from the road funds that we can use for striping. So that'll get us three, four miles. It, well, it depends. That's why we have to talk about which roads. Cause I might have some ideas. You might have some ideas. The road hawk might have some ideas about which roads you get straight. But yeah, about 240,000.
Supervisor Satella brought up the hotspots, which is really important as far as accidents. Understanding that and thank you for bringing that up because if we don't address those issues, we're really not accomplishing very much. When we talked about Fraser, Shore, the accidents there, have we looked at the possibility of just putting a three-way stop there?
We have actually requested a proposal from one of our consultants to, um, actually look at a roundabout for different reasons. Um, and so they actually provided a pro, proposal. I forgot the amount. So we'll, can talk about that at the ad hoc as well as well. It kind of came recently, but yeah, we, for a lot of different reasons, I think maybe a roundabout might be better and solve the issue of the accidents. And just actually be a better installation.
Well, until we get that, we need to look at what we can get in place sooner. Uh, every time I come through that intersection, it's, we all know it's a dangerous intersection. The ad is, is everything on Fairview and Fallon is brought up, how they don't see that as a danger zone. I, I don't really understand. The other, uh, road that is a concern, I think should be concerned to all of us is Wright Road at 25. The little section between, uh, 25 and San Felipe. Has there ever been any talk about just closing that off?
Um, no.
At, at 25 and Wright because.
Right near kind of Dassels essentially.
Across from Dassels.
Yeah.
Oh, not further towards 25, at 25. Not at Dassels. Obviously he wants to have his, they want to have their customers come through. I'm talking 25 and Wright. Because this is where people are darting across 25 and this is where a lot of accidents happen.
So essentially.
Fatalities happen.
Perhaps have a cul-de-sac there, like can cut it off kind of or something. So there'd be a cul-de-sac by Dassels essentially in that farmer or some.
Right. Exactly right.
Yeah, no.
Something to think about just because that's where people are, again, darting across and it's, becomes dangerous. I think there was a accident there recently where the car was caught on fire and, I know every time I'm coming through there too, I'm sure all of you have had this. You're coming down 25 and you, you see that car on Wright Road and you're like, don't go, don't go, please don't go. And sure enough, they'll just jump right as you're approaching. So I know it's an inconvenience for some people, but they can always go, uh, south on San Felipe and come back on 25. We just have to do something that makes it safer there because that is a dangerous area. So and I, I think I heard you say, was it 2.5 for the, uh, SB1 VLF?
Yeah. So, um, yearly it is about 2.5. I think we're receiving about 230,000 a month, 240,000 a month. So whatever that equals, a little more than 2.5 million a year, but yeah.
You get that broken down for us so we know exactly how much vehicle license fees, how much is gas tax? What's going on? Just so we have better breakdown of that.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I'll bring that to the ad hoc. No problem.
Last time we had the conversation about the double striping, double yellows on some of these areas, some of these roads. I know unfortunately, I know Fraser and Shore are considered these farm roads, but you know, we, again, we've all seen this. Every one of these people are just are passing at full speed. Something needs to be done. I know it's, people get upset about that, but I think lives are more important than people just trying to get around each other, passing on these.
Yeah. What we've been doing on Fairview, if, on the new Fairview pavement, I just directed the teams to just double yellow pretty much almost everything on Fairview. So similarly, yeah, I understand because people are just passing.
Yeah, but we can't just say double yellow. We need to make sure the engineers approve it. Otherwise we double yellow and there's an accident and we're responsible for it. And I think Supervisor Zanger talked about in the past, more signage, more of the flashing signs showing the speeds people are, are going. So they kind of more aware of, hey, I'm driving 80 miles an hour. I thought I was going 50. Those really are very helpful to bring awareness to people. Some people will use it as a way to judge how fast they can go, but there are those signs that will cut off at a certain speed. So people can't use it to test if they can hit 100 or not. So, and it, it, that's, it's actually what happens. So it's kind of a crazy thing.
They try to make the sign go non-readable and yeah, they exceed the, yeah. Unfortunately, that's correct, believe it or not.
Yeah. So I want to make sure that we're, we're, if we're double yellowing, we have to make sure we have the engineers approve it first. So we're not liable later and, um, what we can do here in different places.
Yeah. And they did that with Shore Road as well in the design plans. It's not all double yellow, but a good portion of it is per the design. So.
Okay. And then the last thing I had, I thought I heard you say on Fraser reconstruction, we kind of talked about just called in place. Is that what we're talking about here?
Reconstruction. It likely will be a CIP, which you, as you know, you, you grind up the pavement itself, which we've done in Fairview as well. You put the pavement back as a base and then you put a few inches asphalt on top. So that's likely the treatment for Fraser Lake.
Okay, good. I want to make sure we're not just going to go do a full reconstruction.
I don't think we can afford it, but yeah, the CIP should be fine for.
Okay, okay. Perfect. And that's all I had. Thanks.
Supervisor Curro.
I'm going to start off by apologizing because I have a list. So I'm starting there. First of all, Steve, thank you. You're not going to maybe like everything I have to say. So it's not personal. It's just, I gotta do what I gotta do. Uh, let's start off with maintenance. Maintenance isn't being talked about. Um, I know some key roads that um, my constituents have been calling about are Blossom, Enterprise, Sienna Gaya, not the part that's being repaired, Pinoch, Southside. They're seeing with the weathers that they're starting to get, you know, sides are, are dropping and cracks and potholes, but I, I know that's, I'm just wanting the ad hoc to be fully aware. It's not just road repair. Uh, in the sense of new roads, it's maintenance. And so I'm really happy to hear that the software is, is moving forward. I'm saddened to hear about the wifi issue, especially with all the money coming in from the broadband initiative. Uh, so if staff is not able to, to highlight the areas that we need just to be able to keep our road conditions. I, I think there's a nice push there. Tres Pinos. So a couple of things on Tres Pinos. Um, I didn't see anything listed there about, um, uh, Quin Sabi or Bellato Road. And it said South Side to 25. At what point, South Side to 25? Are we talking like from the, 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 you know, the.
Just that little piece.
That little piece that goes up and around? Okay, okay. Just so that the public understands where that is. Uh, when it comes to, um, F Street, there's F Street that's by Third and Four, uh, Third and Fifth, but there's also F Street by First Street over by Quin Sabi. Is any of that being repaired? Because that's in pretty bad condition.
Yes. So there's an SB1 project called F Street that has kind of gotten pushed because it's SB1 and we've been kind of actually spending all that money in a good way. But, um, I believe it's two, three or 400,000 that we put in the SB1 program. I'll check real quick for specifically for F Street, 290,000. So I think that's the piece you're referring to. Um, so when SB1 funds available, I mean, we'll just have to talk about with the ad hoc a little bit because next year a lot of the SB1 funds are going to be with Coal Road. And then the last piece of Fairview. But to answer your question, it is on the SB1 program because you have to send, you send these programs, streets, segments, street segments to the state. So we did allocate about 290,000 for that piece.
I, I just want to make sure, especially, you know, now that we do have an ad hoc that's going to be working with you and focusing on this, is that the SB1 funding, that projects that have already been put in are staying in the pipeline because I'm very concerned that things are going to be pushed aside for other priorities. Making sure, I, I, I totally support the 240,000 and the ad hoc, you know, coming up with some road suggestions on, on the striping. But then that $240,000 that's coming in from SB1 monthly, I, I'm assuming the ad hoc will be coming back to the full board for recommendations, you know, present recommendations. I just want to make sure that. to make sure that the roads that have already been assigned are actually staying in the pipeline. So that's one of my concerns. Which brings me to Siena G Road. This is the item you're not going to like where I'm at. That Siena G Road portion, that is from the, basically the barn area, the park barn area that goes over to Hollister Hills, you know, Supervisor Tiffany told me that that was going to be done in the fall of twenty-two. I wasn't even on the board yet. Then it was spring of twenty-three. Then it was fall of twenty-three. Then spring of twenty-four, fall of twenty-four, spring of twenty-five. Now it's fall of twenty-five with you just saying that most likely construction will not happen now until spring of twelve, till twenty-six. So we're not getting it done, and we're not supporting our wine industries and tourism. The wineries are failing. They are moving their tasting rooms to other counties. They're selling their products, and taxes are being brought in in other cities and counties. And we are suffering because we do not have that road done. Okay, I did my whole spiel, because I'm telling you, they're not happy. They're calling me constantly. They're fed up with the county. They don't believe anything that we say. Just letting you know. When it comes to maintenance, the other thing is, is I know it's not your responsibility, but I want, since we're talking about roads, if the COG members could help support any maintenance on Highway twenty-five, it has started, Supervisor Satello even mentioned it to me, it has started to really show some deterioration. And if we can really help by writing to Caltrans, anything that we can do as a board to help support the COG members in ensuring that those maintenance, because those maintenance issues, you know, once they get too far down the line, you can't fix them. The other thing is, when you are doing the cold, I forgot the acronym.
Cold in place.
Yeah, I know the term. I just know it's CIP. That we're also looking at where the sinkholes are, and that we're doing some compaction in those areas. So we're not just doing that and then having the sinkholes happen again. Those are, those are basically my biggest comments. I just am really disappointed about Siena G and the fact that it's been so long, and it's still not going to happen. I was, we were just told at the last update, it was going to start spring, and now it's fall, and now it's possibly not till spring of twenty-six. So that's just really challenging. I give all my support to the ad hoc in helping in any way they can to ensure that these road projects are moving forward. At the same time, I think we do need to be looking at the priority roads that are high, so Union Road, Fairview Road, Shore Road, Frazier Lake, all these roads that are high-impact traffic areas for our commuters have to be the priorities. But if we're going to talk tourism, we have to also talk about South County. So thank you. And sorry, Steve, my apologies, that wasn't personal.
No, no, no. And I'd like to just mention a couple things, because you brought them up. So Bellato Road in Trace Pinos, the reason that one's not on the list is because there's a grant in the works to put a water line down that road. And so when the grant comes through, if it comes through, then we'd be repaving Bellato Road in Trace Pinos. Regarding Siena G, there's essentially was three phases. We finished two out of the three phases. I agree the last phase of two miles has taken way too long, completely agree. However, in this winter of twenty-two, twenty-three, we had four landslides in that segment. We fixed three of the four landslides. We still have one big one with a big wall that's going to have to be built. But, and we haven't got that wall designed yet, even to this day. So I understand the frustration. I agree with it. It's a delay. But we have finished three out of the four, or excuse me, two out of the three phases of Siena G over the past three years. So, but we still have that last one point nine miles left, which I hope and pray we can start ASAP, just like you do.
I really, I know. You and I, we've talked about this so many times. We've gone out there so many times. I understand the engineering issue. But whatever we need to do to help support that, and if it's an engineering issue, then we need to start talking about what is the engineering issue? And are they not willing to engineer it because it is such a earthquake-friendly, especially after having ten earthquakes in that very area between Saturday and Sunday morning, or was it Friday and Saturday morning? We had ten earthquakes that were right off of Ridge Mark, which just make the roads slide even more. So I get it, but at the same time, we can't promise things and not fulfill them. So let's stop making the promises and start coming up with some realistic schedules that we can actually meet. The other thing is, you use the word start a lot. Start construction, start design.
Well, these are all construction dates.
I just want to make sure that the public is aware. You're stating that these are construction, not design. So the only other thing I wanted to comment on is the CSAs. I think as a board, we need to really be very clear. We cannot subsidize CSAs. CSAs are property owners' responsibilities. And if they refuse to do Prop two eighteen elections to increase the fees to fund their roads, then it is not the responsibility of the remaining residents to supplement CSAs. The point of CSAs is that their owner paid. I appreciate everything that you and your team have done to educate the new residents of CSAs, but they need to start having those Prop two eighteen elections to up their fees to be able to afford to maintain their roads. It cannot fall on the back of other residents that are paying their tax dollars. So thank you, and I will stop there.
No, and that's why, that's why I mentioned the funding for the CSA, literally, because of what you just said, so that if they don't have the funds, we have to go through the process, because we've kind of got ourselves sideways in the past. So that's why I mentioned it specifically for that one. So I think we're on the same page.
Thank you, Supervisor Curro, for all those comments. Just to clarify, we are, as far as the ad hoc, Supervisor Velazquez and myself, we are looking at solutions for improving maintenance, and we are definitively committed to the current schedule. I think everybody's on the same page there. The ad hoc, you know, so it's solutions for everyday maintenance, potholes largely, oversight of the existing schedule, and looking for how we can provide further help to oversee that, and then exploring potential for future projects. And I will just mention briefly, as long as it's been alluded to here, to the concerns that the ad hoc will be bringing a proposal, perhaps as early as late March, to go for an RFP, for a project management firm to oversee and give some help to Public Works as far as oversight of our slate of existing projects. I will also just mention, so Seeley Avenue, Steve, I know we've been in contact a lot about the different punch list items, the curbs and things like that.
On Carr Avenue?
I'm sorry, Carr Avenue. Thank you for correcting me there. Yeah, so Carr Avenue, the punch list of different items. Where are we at? Are we moving along with that? Because I do still get a lot, as you know, I communicate with you, I get a lot of just concerns about that.
Yeah, we still, we've been withholding funds from the contractor. I believe there's about twelve punch list items. He reached out to me last Friday, I reached out to him to have another site visit to make sure we're on the same page with those items, to finish that project, so to speak. Yes, so we're down to those amount of items, so we're still actively coordinating those, basically.
Okay, and I have asked, you know, through whatever mechanisms I can, people in Aroma and Carr Avenue to communicate to me or Public Works, so we can make sure that Steve's team gets that. So please do communicate that. And then San Juan Highway, you know, just to put a plug, to emphasize the importance of, I'm hopeful, you mentioned summer, the importance of having it in the summer again, because of ANZAR is really, really crucial for just traffic safety, if anything, and just the, you know, the inconvenience it could cause to the school traffic. So if we could definitely try to get that for the summer, I would greatly appreciate, and whatever communication we can do with ANZAR, and that might be a PIO issue, but ANZAR and Aroma, San Juan School District, so they're aware of all the logistical issues that come with that. Coal Road, kind of along the same lines, I think we initially said we were going to get that going two years ago. And so please, please on Coal Road, I hear a lot on Coal Road frustration over, you know, again, we have challenges that we have to figure out. But, and I know things come up, like you said, with engineering and things, but whatever we can do to make sure Coal Road stays on schedule. And then the potholes on Coal Road, I think I, maybe if it's not on the list, if we could add that to the list of areas that need, there's a lot of pothole damage on Coal Road with the storms.
Okay.
And then, and then as far as, just as we roll out these projects, I was going to suggest, if it's possible, so that we're continually, to have sort of a systematic way of communicating to the public, if we could have, you know, even if it's a short, like a press release on each of these road projects as they're happening, as we're rolling them out, I would appreciate that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that. Just, you know, a couple paragraphs of, you know, this is about to begin, this is the cost, these are the logistical issues, the delays, just, you know, a few paragraph press release on each of these road projects as they roll out, and maybe even something that, you know, broadly states that this is part of a larger, you know, X million dollar amount of projects that we're working on. I just think that outreach will really help us, and just, you know, it'll alleviate the concerns from the, you know, so we do the projects, but then, as we all know, when you do them, you're going to have people inevitably that are going to complain about the inconvenience of the project. So whatever we can do to get ahead of that, and to also just keep reminding people that this is a priority. And I would just hope we could do that on both traditional and social media, press releases, so the newspapers and the TV stations, so that everyone's fully aware that we're committed to this. And then I want to thank Steve for coming out Friday. We had an issue on off one fifty-six. Farmers have been concerned for months about the lack of drainage planning that perhaps Caltrans did with the new one fifty-six, and the concern of flooding on the old one fifty-six, which of course will be our responsibility once that road is panned it over. It looks like anytime you're going to get two, three inches of rain, that road currently is, currently stands without improvements, would probably flood. And then there's homes over there. There's, I happen to live near that area. It's not why I brought it up. The farmers came to me. I would not be affected, I don't believe. But there's concerns about flooding, very serious concerns about flooding to a couple of the homes in Nangwu Seed Company, you know, very important agricultural businesses over there. So appreciate Steve coming on. It looks like we have a solution. They're going to put in some drainage, and then we're going to have to look at potentially cleaning out San Juan Creek there, which is across from Mission Farm RV Park, if that gives you an idea of the potential flooding in that area that I think, you know, I'm hoping that we can get support on the county to, I don't think the dollar amount's going to be a relatively large dollar amount to clean that creek out, because that, Steve's conclusion was that that would be another way to mitigate potential flooding in that farm area there. So thank you for that. And then, striping, I'm hoping, because our next ad hoc is on March sixth, and then that would put it at March, maybe March eleventh, maybe March twenty-fifth meeting. Can we hash, are there, you said two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and it's, how many, just a few roads we're talking about? Can we hash that out here? Because I would like to put a plug in for Union as soon as possible, personally, and I know there's a couple others. I'm just wondering if we could just, is that, or do we have to bring that back as an allocation? Can we at least hash out the recommendation?
I would bring it back, since there's an allocation associated with it, yeah.
Okay, but can we hash it out here, so we could bring it back, maybe March eleventh, to get it done quicker?
Yeah, that's fine.
Does anyone, or at least have a couple of the roads? I've said my piece on Union. I don't know.
I totally agree with Union. I think Fairview, I think Frazier Lake, I think Shore Road, those are the priority roads. Those are the people driving at night that can't see where the road curbs, and you're like, oh, I hope I'm still on the road. I mean, it's bad.
I agree. I think Union, Frazier, Fairview, Shore, they're going to start doing construction on that. So I don't know if that would make much sense at this point. But those are the major roads that.
Supervisor Curro.
I'd like to add, I've had people call regarding Santa Ana Road.
Can I clarify, Supervisor Satello, at what point we're on Santa Ana? Because just the whole thing?
Well, it's.
Because I had a couple of those calls, too.
Probably, gosh, I'm trying to think. From the stoplight at Fairview, kind of going down, I don't know, I don't know if a mile encompasses it in totality, or if that's way too much. But it's kind of towards the roundabout.
Yes.
Yeah.
But obviously, you know, on kind of that, on the county portion of that area.
Okay, Santa Ana, Santa Ana Valley, but Santa Ana?
Santa Ana, not Santa Ana Valley. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor, one more question. Steve, the patching you do for the potholes, what are you using? Just asphalt patch or the liquid?
So it's mostly asphalt, although if you drive down Fallon, we patched that, gosh, over a year ago, and we found a new mix out of Kalinga. They're going to start making the mix in May, but it, it seems to work really well. So we're going to be ordering some more of that versus just your standard cold patch that we've been using.
Have you tried the mix the city's using?
We haven't. Actually, we fixed that with, if you go to Bixby Road, they use like a liquid gap melted mix. Yes, we have used that on.
It seems to hold up much.
Yeah, and that's.
Longer periods of time.
And it's similar to the one from Kalinga. It's not a liquid, but it, it's somewhat of a hybrid. So, yeah, so that seems to be holding up really well. So we're going to lean towards that one. And as soon as they start making it, it's either April, May, they're going to start manufacturing.
Well, if we can't, can we start using liquid instead of the asphalt patch? I thought I heard you say you're going to do some patchwork here and there.
Cold patch, yeah.
But can we maybe start using that liquid, so it holds up better?
We'll look into that. There's, there's kind of pluses and minuses with the liquid, but yes.
Can you talk to the city, see what they're using there? It seems like it held up pretty well when we started using it there.
Okay.
Thank you. Just the last part, I was just going to mention, we will bring the maintenance of twenty-five to, I know Supervisor Velazquez is chair.
He brought it up already.
He took note about it as well. Bring that to that discussion as well. Appreciate that. I have nothing else. Does anybody else have anything else?
Don't hate me, I'm really sorry. You brought up cleaning out the creek beds. I think it's a priority area that we need to start looking at, but I think we need to start collaborating more with the Resource Conservation District, and really utilizing our Fish and Wildlife Committee, and bringing them in on how we can really start to bring the community and the conversation. So I would be very supportive of something like that.
Great. Anything further? Hearing none. We're done with that item. I've been asked for recess, so we'll take five minutes. Thanks.
Great.
Maybe have the other one loaded.
Recording stopped.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Had some emergency issues and which facilities need some permanent issues. And so on this chart, under categories, which is the second column there, the Bs in B were emergency protective measures. And the A was deep debris removal. Those are kind of the two activities that FEMA assumes are happening early at the process and or right after the emergency occurs. They consider it debris removal. So emergency is get the roads open, facilities open, safe to the public. And debris is get the debris off the roads or out of the side of the roads and transported elsewhere. I'll say, so that's categories A and B. Then category C, which is road and bridges, those are kind of the permanent restorations. And we have half a dozen of those. And I'll go through them real, real quick on this list. But those are kind of the permanent issues that we want to make permanent repairs. And FEMA says, yes, you can possibly get reimbursed or no, we don't think you should get reimbursed. There's a lot of reasons why that we'll go through. And so we work with FEMA to give them cost estimates. And for all the permanent restorations, type C categories, FEMA's team actually meets with us on site. Few of these projects we've met with onsite multiple times. One of them's still in the progress that we'll talk about in a minute as far as FEMA's team reviewing it. But so we meet with FEMA on site. They have their own cost estimator there and their own engineers there. And they work with us to come up with cost estimates for repairs of the different facilities. Then it goes through five or six other steps at FEMA. And eventually, in a, in a perfect world, two things happen. One, it gets obligated for funding. That means FEMA's team says, you should get these funds. And two, we actually get paid for those obligated projects. And so I'm going to go through a few of these real quick. And then you might have some questions after that. But the first few projects were emergency measures where, whether it was HHSA or our own OES team helped shelter folks and feed folks. And then we, we told FEMA, you know, please give us these costs. And I'm going to go through obligations amounts in a second and how much gets paid and how that's determined. But so the first three rows there were essentially sheltering folks, feeding folks, and trying to get reimbursed for those costs. Good news is, just three weeks ago, I think after I created this spreadsheet, item number two, which is Shelter South Side Road, actually became, went from recipient final review because we made that final review. It's actually now obligated. So all those top three are obligated. And what that means is FEMA, for those specific shelterings, says, well, we're pretty sure we're going to pay. I said that specifically, pretty sure we're going to pay you for 75% of those costs. Sometimes they say, we're going to give you 100% of the costs. If it was kind of an emergency, you had to do it right there. For this event, we will actually give you 100%. But generally speaking, FEMA gives us 75%. And then the state, and I put it, I have a typo here on the far right column, pays 75% of the remaining unpaid bill by FEMA. So if you have $100, in a perfect world, FEMA would pay for $75. And then the state would actually pay for another $19. So you actually have $6 that neither agency typically pays for. But together, between FEMA and the state, in a perfect world, they'll give us 94% reimbursement for the, all these projects that we're going to discuss real quick. So this last event or this, these last declared emergency, there's actually a couple items we'll go through real quick where FEMA said, we're going to give you 100%. That's just the way we're going to do this with these emergency procedures. And most other things will give you 75%. So good news is, like for the first item out of 6,000, FEMA said, we're actually going to give you 100% for that one. Next item, now it is obligated, the Shelter of South Side Road. And that was, what we did was, we had folks stay at the migrant center on South Side Road. That's the name of the center. And then we also had some folks stay in a hotel. And so FEMA, as of, I think it was January 23rd this year, said, okay, we're going to obligate that as well. We'll give you 75%. What they do is they send the 75% to the state of California, CalOES. CalOES looks at the project. And most of the time, they say, we'll give you 75%, 75% of the remaining cost. So you're really just left with about 6% unpaid. So, so that little column at the upper right should say typically 75% of the remaining cost share is provided by the state is what it should say. So good news, top three, they're all hopefully going to be paid for as, as much as we possibly hope for. And then going down, we have management costs for essentially both the first storm event and the second storm event. And FEMA has a calculation. It's roughly 5% of this cost to the tune of, for both of those, about 53K. In the future, I highly recommend, and we kind of, we tried to go down this path earlier, but there's actually project management specialty teams that will help manage all the things that Public Works and our local OES team, we manage. But in the future, if there's an event, hopefully there isn't, but if there's a disaster event, I highly recommend you just, we hire a consultant management team, project management team, because FEMA pays for most of those costs. So in my humble opinion, it's, it's kind of a no brainer. I don't know if it would cover all their costs, but they instantly cover about 5% of project costs, generally speaking. So in the future, good news is they're still going to pay the county that amount for the time we spent. And so that's the good news. Okay, so going down to
Keep going, Steve.
Category C, I'm sorry, talk a little faster. So to lump up category C, those projects have all been obligated even as of, also January 23rd in the afternoon. The Merrill Road, Lover's Lane project was also obligated. So instead of applicant signed project, which we had done, somewhere in the last week of January, FEMA looked at our projects again and said, no, that project's actually going to be obligated as well. So that's also good news on Merrill Road and Lover's Lane. They were just, Merrill Road was kind of a small embankment failure and Lover's Lane were some pipes that failed. So, and some ditches that we had to repair. So Lime Kiln Road was a big washout that FEMA's team is saying, okay, it's obligated. We think it's, it should have been repaired. The environmental folks are still pushing back a little bit on that one, which is that 1.1 million one. It's, it's a big one. So what happened was on Lime Kiln Road, a pipe washed out. And then eventually the whole creek started to wash out the whole road towards Lime Kiln Bridge, which we're actually replacing in the summer, just totally different project. And so we had to work with a contractor to replace that. And the environmental folks, they're called EHP, they're kind of behind the scenes. Thought maybe we should have done a couple more environmental studies, which we'll talk about in a second. But, but the initial team says, you're obligated, we want to pay you for that project. The other BBB projects, our emergency projects, and actually a few of these have gotten paid. So New Adria, which is 448,000, FEMA paid us back and the state paid us back, excuse me, reimbursed us already. 94% of that. And as well as some of these emergency projects down below, we've actually been, actually received checks from FEMA. It's in a good way. So we started to receive some checks. Jumping down to Cottonwood Road, Los Pinos Creek. So when you're driving South County and you, you kind of veer off on one of the side roads, there's another road called Cottonwood Road, there's a low water crossing. It's a concrete bridge essentially, low water. It's, it's actually double box culvert, but it's a concrete structure. And we did some temporary repairs there, which FEMA actually provided reimbursement for the temporary repairs to get things in a, in a decent state of condition. What washed away from the storm, Mother Nature, there are these concrete blocks, they each weigh about 20 pounds, connected with rebar on a grid. And that was used to stabilize the embankments there. And the storms actually washed, first they ripped the rebar part and then they washed some of that downstream. And so we met with FEMA twice, at least, at that project area and said, you know, we want to replace this. We want to do some permanent repairs. The temporary repairs were, we took some big rip rap, we used one of our contractors. And we reestablished the embankments with just some big rock and things. So it's in much better shape than it was after the storm came through. But we want to do more permanent repairs to tune up about $200,000. And we're still waiting for some, what they call is a determination memo from FEMA. And so we'll, we're still waiting for the environmental team to help us in that regard. And then the last project, a road project, which is a little project of Aramita's Road, which services about three structures. That's hopefully going to be obligated. We haven't received the funding for that yet. One additional thing I want to mention that is actually was removed from this list by FEMA. This is a list straight from FEMA's website, their portal. About a month ago, we received a letter for two pipe repairs that we had performed that we told FEMA about. One was on Kalinga Road, one was on Old Hernandez Road. They each cost about 300K to repair. Basically what was happening was a local creek was just undermining the road and, and washing away the support of the road, basically. So that there was a pipe that was kind of crushed in both locations. And then the road was, there was just a little piece of the road supporting the road. So the road was about to collapse, basically. And so we had one of our contractors, on-call contractors, go out there, replace the pipes, replace some of the rip rap that had washed away and rebuild that little section of the road. And we received a letter in January of this year saying, you have 60 days to appeal this letter. So we have about three weeks to appeal, which we will. But basically, it says for, and we told FEMA, you know, we were meeting every, every week with FEMA and we said, we're doing this activity over in these locations. But it says, the applicant requests a reimbursement for the restoration and repairs of its facilities. The applicant submitted the application after the project was 100% complete. True. Based on the record, FEMA has not afforded the opportunity to consult with the appropriate federal agencies to ensure compliance with the environmental folks before the work began, which is also true. But we were close to losing both of those roads, which Kalinga and Hernandez, both of them service, I don't know, dozens of residents, they're pretty rural, but they service a lot of people. So we replace, you know, we fixed those two areas to the tune of about $600,000. So we're going to, you know, submit our argument for being eligible for that reimbursement. But as of now, FEMA's environmental folks said we should have got them involved. And so, so that's out there. And then also, we actually applied for reimbursement for the RV trailers at the migrant center. So the county, in a very good way, let's see, there's a lot of folks that were displaced by the storms that literally had nowhere to live. And so the county, in a very good way, generous way, I should say, purchased 11 RV trailers that we put up at the migrant center on South Side Road. Folks lived there for, I think it was over a year. I don't remember the exact timeframe, but quite a while, there was families, pets, all kinds of fun, you know, good things up there. And so we applied to FEMA for reimbursement of some of those costs. That also received a letter that we were denied, which we kind of, that was kind of a long shot to get reimbursed for the trailers. But FEMA's team generally, they thought it was extremely a good thing for the county to do that. And it was, they understood it helped our citizens, but it just didn't fit in their reimbursement program. So we actually received a determination letter that the RV trailers themselves would not be reimbursed. So, so those are two kind of letters that we received. We're going to push back on the pipe, $600,000 cost and see where it goes. We have to send it to the state first in the next three weeks. And then there's a process in that regard. So I can give you more details, but maybe it's good I post for questions and might have some questions and things.
We go to public comment, please?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board and start with Supervisor Satell?
Thank you. Steve, of all of the items that are on that chart, how many of them have been paid to date? And then when do we expect to receive payment? Which I know with FEMA, I mean, to be honest, I'm kind of surprised we've already received payment because when we were back in Washington DC last year, it didn't sound very optimistic for being paid anytime within the next few years. So I'm happy to hear we've received some money. But do you have any idea?
So
And I mean, do you think we've received 10%, 20%?
Yeah, we've actually received, off the top of my head, 400, it's about 700,000. So yeah, so what is that, 30, 40% of what we requested so far, actually? Which is, like you said, encouraging because when you go into FEMA's portal, it says obligated funding plan approved, payment pending or something to that effect. So I don't have an answer when, you know, obligation, when payments will be
So it's just kind of random when we receive payments?
It's a great question. I, I don't know how, what triggers to receive payment, honestly. It's, it's just, it said you've been obligated, so you've qualified for reimbursement. And that's usually the last real thing it says.
And so now we just wait, essentially?
Yeah, we just, you may or may not know this, but we just received payment for one of our road projects on Lover's Lane from 2017. So was that eight years ago? So, yeah, but, yeah, so that's the status. And then the one with Cottonwood, that's the one that hasn't been obligated. The environmental folks are, that's kind of down towards the bottom and highlighted in yellow. Well, it's down towards the bottom. It's about $200,000 where we want to put back some sturdier rip rap in that area, even though we have put some back on an emergency basis. The environmental folks are still analyzing that one, I guess you'd say. So we just have to wait. But the rest, there is a possibility, a good possibility that we'll be receiving funding sometime.
Okay, and then we're appealing the 600,000 for the two pipes?
Correct.
And I mean, I think Cottonwood is definitely a major issue area. I know they get a ton of damage. And I know Supervisor Kuro, I went with her last year or year before, I don't know, time flies. But went out and looked at the area and I know the residents have a real hard time out there. And when it rains, it really affects them.
The large drainage everything?
Yeah, that would be great if we can get reimbursement for that and, and do some permanent fixes up there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Zager?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, FEMA is sort of a nightmare. I, I have, I have a comment to make and it's, it's just because we're talking about the storms. Lover's Lane obviously is an issue with storms. It always has been. And I know this is no longer my, my district. But when it was my district, you know, I knew a lot of the, I talked to a lot of the residents out there that had moved out there that weren't from the area. And they were all surprised and had no idea they said that there was going to flood. And I guess, you know, legally, they had to have been informed at some point that it was a floodplain. But I just want to throw out, and I don't know if there's support, but the county can, and I don't know the legality, you have to go to county council, but if the county could do maybe stronger outreach regarding all flood zones and, you know, new houses or even people buying houses that are moving in as far as awareing residents. Because we say 100-year flood zone, but, you know, Lover's Lane, I think they've flooded like, I don't know how many times in the last decade or two in the 100-year floodplain. So if with the county, I would be interested to see the county do some kind of, put in some kind of procedure where there is more outreach and, you know, beyond just, oh, this is a 100-year floodplain. Don't worry, you know, you're probably good for 100 years. Instead, I'd like to see something like, hey, this has flooded, you know, this many times in the last two decades or something. Just so, I think it's just fair to the people that are moving here that aren't from here, that don't know these things. Because a lot of them really are surprised. And, and then you have people that, you know, are from the area and they say, what do you mean? Of course it floods, it always floods. So I think the county, if we could step up and do some kind of better job about educating the people that are in these floodplains, I think that would be helpful. And I know that's not really FEMA related, but just because we're talking storms, I want to throw that out. That's really all I have to say right now.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Thank you. I think it is, it's being proactive. So thank you for that. You talked about the 600,000 and how you needed to move quickly because it services several families out there. But what does that mean to FEMA? I mean, what, when there's an emergency, is it hold up, wait a week or two weeks, three weeks, a month, we'll get back to you? Or if it's an emergency, go ahead and move on it and then we'll, we'll deal with it? I mean, we need to have an answer to that so these types of things don't happen.
Yeah, great question. And I'll, I'll answer that in addition to Supervisor Zanger's question. So, well, I'll jump, first I'll go to Lover's Lane real quick because in a good way, the state has maybe received about $400 million for a lot of things that relate specifically to disasters. And so they've been reaching out to us. And so the county has requested $3 million to work on Lover's Lane specifically because it's in a floodplain and it gets damaged with every storm. And so we'll see where that goes, but that would rebuild pretty much the whole stretch all the way to 152. So, because the middle part was rebuilt a little while ago. So that's in the works. The other thing, just to kind of take one step back, the FEMA team and the CalOES team that deal with us, you know, during 95% of the project, they've been super helpful, they truly have. Then to answer Supervisor Velasquez's question, once it gets kind of to the environmental historic preservation team, first of all, they're, not to make excuses for them, but they're really understaffed. And they're very protective of the critters and plants and creeks and things. And so for those specific pipe removals, which we told FEMA, we were replacing this pipe and this underwashing of the road before the road completely washed away in those two locations. FEMA's perspective is, from that group, was, well, you could have brought us out there sooner. Because I don't think those two pipes, they kind of failed towards the end of the second storm. And so FEMA was saying, you should have brought us out there sooner. We told FEMA exactly what we were doing every step of the way because we met with them weekly. Nobody ever said, you know, or we never said, don't go out there. We never said, you know, we're doing this without your permission. We told, we informed them. But I guess their perspective was, or environmental folks was, well, we shouldn't have been out there to, you know, get eyes on the site before you did the repair. So it's, it's a little bit of a gray area. But we did what we thought was right. You know, our road superintendent says, we're going to lose these roads. And, you know, you can't cross a creek that's four feet deep and 12 feet wide with almost any vehicle, really. And so all those folks would have been stranded. I guess we could use helicopters or something, I don't know. But so we decided to replace the pipes and we'll see where it goes. But it's, it wasn't exactly at the moment the storm hit. So they said, well, you had a few weeks. And we said, we're going to replace these, but they, you know, no, no one from FEMA reached out to us, I guess you'd say.
What is the procedure now? If this were to happen again right now, what would your steps be?
We, we would, I guess we'd be more proactive and say, if your environmental team needs to come out to this site, we're going to be there Monday. So repairing this road, so, and maybe document that better, I guess. It was definitely discussed, I don't know.
Can we make that into a policy so you make sure your fault, first step is call FEMA to come out? I mean, we, we see what's going on here, right? We, we know the game with these agencies.
Yeah, I think
We know where it's going to go. If they can find a way not to pay, they're not going to pay. So that first step should always be that contact. And then we have something at least to come back later if they don't want to pay.
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, you know, the day before, I guess we could have emailed our project management team at FEMA and said, we're going to be there Monday, literally, and fixing these two locations. And that might have helped things, I, I don't know. But that's probably the, yeah. Well, in the future, and again, believe it or not, FEMA is even trying to make their process more streamlined, even for payment. Believe it or not, they're, they're trying to improve over this, even this last set of storm events. So, yeah, it's just, it's communication and documentation. The emergency ones are a little bit tricky.
So just step back for a second. So when you talk of FEMA, is it when it's already declared an emergency? Is that when we're, they need to get involved or before something's called? Say before the governor calls an emergency, but?
That, that's the other part. They get involved after the emergency is declared typically. Well, yeah, I think typically the governor has to declare emergency or FEMA, excuse me, federal government declares an emergency, then it activates FEMA.
So can we make sure we have all parts of this covered? So if it's the state or if it's feds or if there's no emergency call, but these roads are getting into this position? What, what are the procedures? I mean, can you document something so we don't have this happen? We can go right through it quickly? And I think what Supervisor Zanger is saying, being proactive is what we need to be here. Thank you Supervisor for sending over Lover Lane to me. I appreciate that flood zone. But he's right, we have to really make sure we're being proactive right now. I mean, I, I'm not going to say anything more because I don't want to get jinxed. But before it becomes a problem in some of these other areas that we know there are potential problems, what happens if that road did go out? What was the, the plan for those residents? So we have the plan in place.
And there are, and as far as emergency procedures, our emergency team was amazing, are amazing, the sheriff. They're on it when the flooding occurred. It's just, yeah, to, hopefully we can rebuild, hopefully we get this other 3 million that comes through. We can rebuild the road, that'll help quite a bit. Getting, you know, as you both noted, it's a floodplain and it, it's tricky with structures and roads and things in floodplains.
Yeah, and lastly is the collection of the money. You mentioned, we finally got some money from 2017. But what is the procedure there? How do we find out what it is? There always is something there with government, you just got to figure out the, the system. And who do we keep checking in with to get the money?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, we do still have active, a project PDMG, like a project manager from FEMA. So I'll just ask a question, how do we find status of payments? I mean, what they do in a good way, the project manager uploads any kind of inactions made, even when they send emails and things, they have this very extensive list of action items. But it doesn't really say you can reach out to the payment team at FEMA for status. So I'll try to chase that down for you.
Seeing that, just one more piece is, talking about the management companies, do you have those in place already? Do we know who we can go to to move quickly instead of going through this ourselves? And maybe they have the better answers on some of these payment processes. So please have all of this, let's start getting moving to the proactive mode rather than reactive. I know everybody responds great, but that's the problem. We're all responding to something that if we could be more proactive, we don't have to respond to.
You bet. And in a good way, our OES team, they just went through a whole RFP process, maybe it was RFQ, excuse me, process. So I think we're onboarding three emergency contractors, at least. They're not the project managers, but they're contractors that specialize in disaster response. And so they're going to be qualified through FEMA to respond, which should also help make us eligible for payment. So in a good way, OES is, I think they might have already been completed with that process even though recently. So I'll, I'll give you an update with that. But we actually are onboarding, I think it's three contractors specifically for future disasters.
So in one month, could you come back and tell us the answer or what you have in place? Again, I, I don't want it to be where it's something we talked about today and we forget about it and the disaster happens and then we're talking about it again. I want to make sure we have something in place.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide you an update. I don't know what's the next one that we qualify for because, but to answer your question, then say it's the last meeting in March or first meeting in April, whatever that is, based on the deadlines we have. But yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Before we have that noted?
Yeah, Supervisor Velasquez, admin will also work with Public Works on working on the procedure on that. We can, we certainly can assist with that.
The loan to the Pacheco Pass Stormwater District, I can't tell which one it is.
It's not. I, I think my direction was county projects. So there's two main projects with that 1.6 million dollar loan. There's roughly 900,000 of debris removal that was performed and another 6-ish hundred, 700,000 of fixing levies. They're both, one of them, the debris removal is still with the environmental folks and with the finance team, both, for full disclosure. And then the levy repairs is with the finance team for final approval. So there, there are a few steps behind obligation, I'd say about two steps behind obligation. But they're on step 11 of 13, both of those, so they're getting close.
Okay, so, so what I want to point out is that we have a Pacheco Stormwater District and we have a Pacheco Water District. We need to make sure that those are both very actively represented because those are the representatives of those areas. And they can pass policies where, when a recording or some sort of transaction happens at the recorder's office. or some sort of transaction happens at the recorder's office, that it's included in their title packets that can come from the title companies. So if we want to do better communication, um, some of these, uh, special districts have done like bright red paper or bright blue paper that makes the item stand out in the packet, trying to get, you know, when you go and sign off on all your titles. It's making sure that it's bringing it to their attention and there's more information. So I think we should be collaborating with those special districts because really that's where the push can come from and they're the ones that are really, I mean, we're trying to support them and we need to support them, but we also need to remember that they're a special district and that is their role. When it comes to, uh, I think I got all that, uh, the, the Pacheco Dam expansion, really being able to support the dam expansion so that more of the water is being held back, less flooding occurs, we have more resources for water and water storage. That dam expansion is a topic that we've brought up multiple times when we've gone to D, DC. And I know, um, between Santa Clara Valley Water and San Benito Water District, they're working on that. So anything that we can do to support that, it will make Supervisor Velasco's residents feel a lot safer because it will be holding the water back. And that's in my mind, being as proactive as you can be is just stop the problem. Also, working with our Resource Conservation District and the special districts and the property owners on maintaining those floodways and the, the responsibility of property owners, I think we keep talking about it, more education about what property owners are responsible for. It's not the county, we don't even have the easement rights to go in and do the cleanup to prevent the flooding. So when it comes to these, these sort of, how do we be preventive? It is really being more collaborative, not just with the, the special districts, but with the nonprofits. I think there, there's a, a real relationship there that we could build. The last thing is, whatever we can do, i- if you need a letter of support, um, if you need residents from the Colinga, um, Hernandez area kind of saying, "We were trapped, um, our lives were, we were unable to get to services." I mean, we could build a little bit of a support mechanism for that. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that they can stop us, especially when this is FEMA and that's following NEPA.
Correct.
Versus CEQA, which is way worse in California, and we're looking at CEQA reform, but we're also looking at NEPA reform at the national level and that we have to make sure our number one priority is keeping people safe. I'm sorry, the three-legged frog, the, the purple-spotted lizard, whatever it is, they're very important, but life safety is our number one concern. And so, um, I really, I'll do whatever you'd like to support that. If it's a letter, a letter from the board or even from, um, any of the residents. Besides that, the, I'm really disappointed about the labor camp housing. I thought we had done such a huge, you know, kind of like step forward trying to show our support for housing, doing temporary housing during an emergency. I thought that FEMA would, there's no appeals process in that one, that's just dead.
No, the good news is there, for the smaller request, which was housing folks in those small worker homes, temp or seasonal worker homes, they approved that. They approved some hotel stays.
Okay.
But for the RV trailers, we tried every which way we could to, to try to get some reimbursement from that. It's, it's pretty unique and it just kind of falls outside of FEMA umbrella, unfortunately. But they gave us.
That's okay.
Kudos, thumbs up for.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A purple-spotted frog, I'd like to get one of those for my three-year-old. I'm sure he'd love it. I, I, I enjoyed that. No, you're good.
I had a construction project, it was a spotted frog that was our problem. I can't remember what color it was, though.
No, you're, it was, it was funny. So, uh, agree with all of Supervisor Curl's comments, I think everyone had good comments. The $600,000, where was that again, the, the pipes?
So, um, Colinga and Hernandez Road, so if you're chowing down, um, 25 past Pinnacles, if you go about four miles, you hit Old Hernandez Road and it kind of goes northeasterly from there. And there was a creek washout pretty close to that intersection. And similarly with Colinga, I think Colinga Road is maybe 12 miles, 10, 12 miles down from Pinnacles. You would also go kind of northeasterly and Colinga is actually a pretty long road. You go a little further into there and there was a creek that washed out, well, almost washed out the road there, so those are the two locations.
Okay, and then, um, can, I think there was some mention, can we look at getting help from Congresswoman Lofgren on this in particular? Um, and maybe drafting a letter from the Board of Supervisors, maybe bringing that, if there's consensus, back to the very next meeting, um, to potentially get a letter out and start the conversation of looking at any way we can further appeal that $600,000 and give our explanation of what happened?
Yeah, and admin's been helping with that a little bit, uh, so yes, the answer is yes.
But I'd like something from the board in particular, and if we could involve John Ariaga on that as well to follow up, uh, I'd really appreciate that. And then, um, and then I thought I heard there was maybe another $400,000 that slipped through the cracks. Am I missing? Was there another project I thought?
Hmm.
Similar nature?
Not that I know of, but I know that we got the two letters, the $600,000 and the RV trailers. RV trailers was a few hundred thousand, but.
Maybe that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
So the RV trailers, what are we doing with those now? There were 11 of them?
So we're, first of all, we're fixing them up so that they're functional in case we have another emergency, but we own them, they're, so just for a little bit of background, there were five trailers purchased during COVID and they're up on the migrant center site, um, at the back of that site. And then for this last event, the county purchased 11 more, so now we have 16. I'm pretty sure the five, HHS wants to keep those available for just COVID and emergencies and things regardless, so they're keeping those active. The other 11, um, we're just trying to do some minor repairs, mostly with our own staff and with a contractor, very minor repairs, just to keep them active in case we had another emergency. But the plan is they're just there now, I guess you'd say.
Yeah, I mean, I, for me, I, I'd like to bring that back for discussion, um, as far as what we're actually doing with those, whether we, um, decide to get some sort of HHS use out of them. I, I heard you say COVID, I, I'm assuming you're just saying if there's another COVID-type emergency?
COVID-type, yeah, exactly.
I, I'd like to get out of the whole COVID business, to be honest. So I, I don't, we don't have a pandemic anymore. I don't see why we would have trailers just in the event of a pandemic happening potentially at some point. I just want to have some more discussion on what to do with, because it's a lot of money and if we could sell these, some of these even, I would be willing to consider doing that unless we have a really good use for them. I just don't want to have these, these RVs just sitting around doing nothing because it's just, that's just an utter waste of taxpayers' money. I'm not blaming you. I think we as a board need to get our reins on what's going on with these RVs and decide to do something with them or decide to sell them.
We can bring it back as an item exactly in that regard to have the board make a determination. I think we'll definitely bring HHS into that discussion because they, besides COVID, they just have needs for temporary housing at HHS, health reasons. So, but yeah, we'll bring it back to the board and, um, especially with the 11 trailers that were purchased two years ago, have that discussion.
And then the 700 to 800,000, you said we received, is there an expectation? I know we had the 2.4-ish million. What do we actually, is there any way of knowing what we actually expect to receive? Do we actually expect to receive, receive all that minus the few percentage points?
We, at this point, have the potential to receive that. We've met our requirements, except for this project we discussed. So I guess it'd be down to, if you subtract out the 600, it's down maybe to 1.8.
Plus the RVs, are you counting?
And the RVs, yeah, actually, I didn't count that in the, if you didn't count that in the 2.8. So if you take the 2.4, so maybe 1.6, and we received, I think, 600 or 700,000, so maybe we receive another million, fingers crossed, in the future, soon? I don't know.
Okay.
But, yeah.
And that money's just basically coming from, back, came from reserves or?
Did I believe the enterprise fund, road fund? There was a fund that loaned that money to this emergency fund. And so, yeah, we put aside the fund, just like you said, and I think that that's a status, so.
Okay. And then as far as the flood zones, I agree. I don't know if we can possibly develop or have some sort of map of the flood zones with streets at some point. I know we've got a lot on your plate, but just down the line, um, that might be something to look at, um, even if we need to do it through the budget. And, and I assume there's a requirement for, um, when there's a real estate transaction for the transactors to note that this is a flood zone and these are the dangers. So when, so when you're selling a home or buying a home, there's required information that's being transacted. Am I correct in assuming that?
I'm not sure I'm the best person to ask, but I think generally you're supposed to disclose any kind of site hazard condition when you're purchasing a home, but I'm probably not the best person to ask, so.
Okay. I, I, ignorance on the real estate part, but if that's not a requirement, I would like to look into what we could do to make it a requirement. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Yeah, I, I believe that is a requirement. I think the issue is that they say this is a 100-year flood, floodplain, but in reality that's outdated because it floods every couple of years. So I think that's the problem because they do have to announce that, but I don't think they're required to talk about exactly how many times it actually floods. I think that's the issue.
Well, I wonder if there's something to just look at there for down the line, basically, like when, when people are buying and selling homes, I agree, they have the right to know, or property, they have the right to know what the real risk is, not this 100-year floodplain thing, because we just talked about it Friday at our site visit, that there really is no, the 100-year floodplain is like a five-year floodplain now. So, um, if you have three or four of these in a couple of years, then that's, the math doesn't work out. You know, I, climate change is real and there is no more 100-year floodplain, uh, under the old context. So whatever we can maybe look at there, I'd appreciate it. And then can we look at, um, more on the planning end? I mean, could we look at further, like further prohibiting residential development in floodplains of a certain, because of where we've gone with the severity of climate change and that these, these are, these are real disaster areas now, um, that you're, there's imminent disaster when you move into these areas or buy these properties? We look at that from a, um, policy standpoint, just prohibiting residential?
So on that specific note, FEMA's, believe it or not, updating their maps even for our county this year to be more up to date. And so what would hopefully happen with, let's just say there's an area where FEMA knows it floods two or three feet based on their studies, that that would be disclosed to property owners. And then the county, once we have an area that says this will flood three feet, we can actually require new homes to be built a foot above that, so four feet higher. The problem with most floodplains is the elevation isn't defined. It just, as you just said, it's a floodplain, but 90% of them, there's no elevations of how deep it floods. It just says it shall flood during this type of storm. So we'll see when the new maps come out, if they're a little more accurate, provide a little more information. And then the county, for new homes, at least in new structures, we can say, "You need to build your home, finished floor, your floor of your home, a foot above that elevation," which would help a little bit, so.
Well, a little bit, I appreciate that, but a little bit's not enough as far as I'm concerned. And, um, I just, you know, I'm just of the belief that, uh, that we really should probably look at this closer as far as floodplains and development and, um, because especially in light of this, we just talked about last Friday, these state mandates and, you know, suddenly we're being told that we don't have a, a, you know, a choice on some of these developments potentially, or that we're being pressured to build all these homes. And, you know, we have to weigh the life safety issue here when we, when it comes to these floodplains. And I just, I just think maybe that's a planning issue, maybe we can add that. I'm sorry, planning and RL's here to the slate of things we're looking at, but I'd like to take a closer look at floodplains in particular when we talk about residential.
If I can add, Sir?
Yes.
We also need to discuss the fire zones because exact same thing, either we're proactive or we're not. And we're waiting for the disaster to happen and then trying to find the excuses to give our residents on why their homes flooded or why they burned down. We need to be in front of all this. We know the, we know where these zones are. We just be clear, I don't, I don't agree that just telling somebody, "As long as you build a foot above that, we'll be okay," because we're hearing a 100-year floodzone has happened every five years. So we know one foot's not going to cover it, two feet, probably one other, maybe 10. We have to be very clear on this because otherwise we're every year in the same situation, every five years of an emergency, uh, rafts or different things to get people out of there, and we, we shouldn't be doing that. We, we know these problem areas and I think Supervisor Curl is correct, if that new dam is expanded, that solves a lot of that problem, but it's still a floodzone. And that's one, one thing we always have to remember.
Anything further? Supervisor Zenger, sorry.
I just wanted to add that we're going to NACO, Supervisor Zenger and I are going to NACO, and it is on NACO's platform, uh, is really advocating for more, uh, streamlining FEMA. They have a FEMA dashboard that they're working on. Last year it was highlighted at the NACO conference. So I think i- if we can add that to our little talking points on reimbursement, but also CSAC, FEMA in reimbursement and being prepared, uh, and what we have to do and what, reducing the CEQA requirements during an emergency are big topics at the state level.
Yeah, I just want to, um, suggest that maybe we can, when we have our housing ad hoc, we can talk about the fire floodplain issue. I think we're meeting tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow. So we can talk about that then, that can be part of the ad hoc, I think.
Great. Appreciate that. And then any other, um, direction other than the requested letter to come back at the next meeting and, um, who can, staff could draft something up, working with Steve, PIO or whoever's involved from the admin side, Penny?
We can do that, yes.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, and if I may, I think we have three weeks to submit, so we'll probably have to circulate something even before the next meeting. But yes, we'll, even sooner we'll have.
Uh, we'll give you, yeah, we, we, we can work around that. This is, we're just talking about, you're talking about the agenda deadlines?
Yeah, I'm just talking about this letter to, um.
This is just a one-page agenda item, so I, I, you know, I think we can all agree that that's, unless, unless there's objections, that we can certainly work around that.
Sounds good.
Great.
All right.
Anything else? Except for that item, that was a.
Sorry, I think we, you could delegate authority for us to do that, on behalf of the board.
On the what?
I think you can delegate authority on behalf of the board for the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I, we're, everyone's okay? Okay, that'd be great. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Um, so that was a presentation that would bring us to the end of that item, that would take us to 2.4, which is discuss and provide direction regarding the, uh, process of negotiating a project-specific tax agreement with the city of Hollister related to annexation of five parcels constituting 8.22 acres, more or less, at the terminus of Glenmore Drive, initiated by the private petitioner.
So, good. Good morning still. So as, as the board knows, we have two separate agreements, um, tax sharing, tax sharing agreements with the city of Hollister. One was executed in 2019 and this was for the residential tax sharing agreement where we agreed to a 50/50, uh, share of property taxes upon annexation. The thing with both agreements, they are only, they only apply if the city initiates the annexation. So this project is being brought forth by an applicant to LAFCO, so neither one of these terms of agreement applies to the project. So, um, so that's where the issue arise. Our 2021 commercial and industrial tax sharing agreement has a few terms, uh, where we agreed to the city receive 70% and the county 30%, uh, post-education, um, post-ERAFT. And this includes, uh, mixed-use projects. And, um, also some of the terms that were included is that the city would disperse, um, that, that our share of sales tax within 60 days of receipt. So attached to this agenda item, there's a LAFCO letter, uh, urging the, both city, it was sent to both us and the city of Hollister to begin negotiations. And, uh, before you today, staff is looking for some directions on parameters. We want to see if, if, um, we're, we're looking forward on kind of direction for negotiations, if you guys would like to apply the same terms and conditions that are included in the residential tax share agreement to be negotiated for this, um, specific project. Also, if there's interest from the board in creating an ad hoc to work on the, the specific terms and conditions, um, for this negotiation. And then that other, uh, the other one is to approve a letter to LAFCO to, to request a 90-day extension. And with that, I, there is a typo, so also, um, delegated authority for staff to fix the typo in the letter. But, but those are the really four items we're looking for direction from the board on.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board, we'll start with Supervisor Curl, please.
I look at this as an opportunity to reopen the overall tax sharing agreement with the city of Hollister. Um, I, I, I know Supervisor Cosmic, he was involved in the, I believe it was the commercial one and with Bob, Supervisor Tiffany.
And in light of, you know, where the community is going with the no annexation, no growth. It, it kind of is a moot point if we don't start solving our wastewater problems. There will not be development in the unincorporated areas if, if we're not addressing the services that are needed. So I'm open to hearing where my colleagues stand on this. I, I think we have to come up with some sort of negotiation for this P, this property. Because it's been far too long that it's been sitting there and, and the topic's been brought up so much, but I'm very interested in hearing where everyone else stands on it. I do feel that we need to make sure, no matter whether it's residential or commercial, that any tax sharing agreement that's being done. Because when we do a tax sharing agreement, it's for that one annexation. Every tax sharing agreement can be, I mean, we have a master tax sharing agreement, but every annexation can have a separate, a separate tax sharing agreement. Which we have to be looking at what is fair for the city and what is fair for the county and how do we ensure that we have that balance? LAFCO is there to help support in these negotiations if needed. So I just want to make sure everybody realizes we can lean on LAFCO and Cal LAFCO and CSAC on these type of things. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Velazquez.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have to go back to trying to renegotiate tax deals. That was a long, hard, hard battle to get through. And I think at the end of the day, it became a pretty fair deal. My question would be, why is the applicant trying to go directly LAFCO, not through the city for that?
I, I believe we had a meeting with, with Executive Jennifer and they, they attempted to go through the city. And I don't recall what the exact issues were of, of moving forward with the cities. I do recall something about them working on the, that the city wasn't going to look into it until they updated the general plan amendments. What was kind of what I recall.
And that's kind of my point. If they should, the proper way should be going through the city first, so the city can tell them what, what they have planned or what they're going to accept. Not let's just, city's not moving or county's not moving, let's just go around them and try to get forced this annexation. I don't think that's what we want to be doing. We don't want to set these stage to allow more people to do it. And I, I disagree. I think there's room for the right projects to be coming, go into the city as far as industrial, commercial, or even residential that makes sense. And I think that's the process we need to follow rather than the old way of how do I get around the rules? Or push through in a different direction, because that's really what caused all the problems in this community is a lot of, let's go ahead and approve that because they're, they're good people. Well, no, it's a good project. Does it make sense? If the city pushed back on the application, that should be the signal right there that we should not be trying to get around it. And I, I did hear from other property owners, I think it was along Powell that was, that were upset about being annexed into the city without their participation in the conversation. So I would rather have it go through the proper way through the city before it came back to us.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah. Well, I was originally of the mindset that I didn't really understand why it was the master tax sharing agreement didn't apply to the project under the circumstance that the applicant went to LAFCO as opposed to the city went to LAFCO. And I thought generally that it makes sense to just have, you know, the, the same tax sharing agreement apply so that there's no at all potential perception of unfairness or anything like that now or in the future. So I was just, I would be in favor of just the, whatever the, the standard tax sharing agreement is to be. But I don't know where the city is with this. I don't know what exactly the history was as far as why they, the applicant did go through LAFCO or, or what that was about. And I don't know. Do, do we, does the staff have any idea where the city, what, what process it is on their end?
Unfortunately, I don't know. We, we could, we can check into it, but I don't have that information.
And I don't know if legal has a question. If, if the city rejects, why would it then go to LAFCO? And kind of, I do know the letter states by state statute where required to negotiate within a certain timeframe when an application is brought to LAFCO. So.
Yeah, I don't know if we can make them go through the city. I have a feeling there's a process to go directly to LAFCO and that's what they've used.
I understand, but we can also deny. So what was this zoned as as far as county future on this property?
What, what was that?
What was this property zoned as in the county for future?
Let me see if. I don't, I don't have that in front of me. Ariel, is that something you could help me with? And sorry to put you on the spot, but maybe we could get that back to you.
As she's looking, Ariel, it's Glenmore Drive, part 8.22 acres on Glenmore Drive near Hollister High School.
And Mr. Chair, wasn't that part of the housing ordinance for the high, when we were picking the islands around the county? That property was part of a, the county's housing element, if I recall correctly, because it was one of the islands. That's all I remember, but I do recall from the city that the city rejected the application because they have a moratorium due to their planning or their general plan amendments. And then LAFCO allows, due to government code sections, applicants do not have to go through the agencies. They can go direct to LAFCO. But there are some steps they have to go through and it would be LAFCO's decision on the denial.
While you're looking that up, I'll just, Supervisor Zenger, do you have anything further?
Not at the moment.
Okay, Supervisor Setella?
Thank you. So ultimate, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So they can choose to go through the city or LAFCO. They chose to go through LAFCO. Now that it's going through that process, this board has no authority in. I mean, all, the only authority it sounds, this is where I need correction. Do we have the authority to deny or approve what they're trying to do? All we're talking about right now is just the tax sharing agreement, right? Because they've chosen to go with LAFCO, it's no longer our decision.
I think with respect to the tax sharing agreement, yeah.
Okay. But I mean, do we have the authority to say, no, we don't want, I mean, we're not going to, like, we want them to go through the city. We don't want them to go through LAFCO, being that it's already gone to LAFCO now.
Yeah.
We don't, am I understanding that correctly?
So we're giving direction on providing direction about the.
Tax sharing agreement.
Yeah, about negotiating this project specific.
Right.
Yeah, I think this is limited to the tax sharing agreement itself. Right.
Okay. It just seems like some of the conversation has stemmed around the direction they've taken and whether we can.
I don't think we can control the direction they're taking, whether it's to LAFCO or to the city. I don't think we can control that, no.
Okay. I mean, to me, it makes sense that it may not be the best case scenario right now, but it makes sense that we just follow the tax sharing agreement that is in place at the moment. So that's all I've got.
Yeah, question for anyone that can answer it, I guess. So say, say we agree to some tax sharing agreement. And then they go to LAFCO and LAFCO approves the annexation and whatnot. Then their project would be, I guess, in the hands of the city council at that point? And then the city council, I mean, do they, does, they would decide if, I guess, their, their moratorium is valid or not? How does, how would that work?
Yeah, I'm not totally, I would think it would go through the city. Yeah, right. Once it's annexed.
If it's annexed by LAFCO, so this would come back to LAFCO after there's a, a negotiation on the, on the tax sharing agreement part, and it would come back to LAFCO for a decision of whether to annex. And any project would go to the city for potential consideration. Supervisor, I think Velazquez and then Curro.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a moratorium or not from the city side. But I know there's an agreement that the city and the county put together. And to me, this seems like a, in, in running around that agreement. And I, who's to say the city doesn't come back and say, well, no, that's not what we wanted for a tax sharing. Remember, they're, they're the other part of this agreement. We can't just decide ourselves. The city has to agree to that. That's why I'm saying we're, we're going around a backdoor rather than, okay, city, what is it you're trying to do? What is, or do you want to go with this tax sharing agreement that we have on this project? Or do you not? It's not for us to come back and just say, well, yeah, works out. Or maybe we just say, hey, it's a hundred percent for us, tax sharing. How's the city going to feel about that, right?
I mean, we could look at whether that is in, in fact, true, whether they can choose to go to LAFCO or whether they.
I think we need to get better information on this.
I have a feeling they can go through LAFCO.
Yeah, I'm sure they probably could. And that's again, some of the issues we had in the past was, don't worry about the city, don't worry about the counties, go do it this way.
Right.
And then we found ourselves asking 30 years down the road, how did that project ever happen?
Right.
This is exactly how they happened. So we should understand from the city what they're looking to do, what, how, if this moves forward, what would that tax sharing agreement look like on their side? And this might be one of the reasons we had this in place this way. So we didn't have these instances where somebody's like, oh, we just go around them and it's the same tax sharing agreement. Cause I remember that, that battle, Mr. Cosmic, he probably remembers it. It took quite a while to settle out a fair tax sharing agreement.
I think we can do both here though, too. Consider the 90 day extension and also check on what happens.
I would say we move forward to 90 day extension and try to get some more clarity from the city side of what they're looking to do.
Supervisor Curro?
So my understanding is when an application is brought to the city, the city, if they are in the middle of a general plan amendment, has the rights to put a hold on it. Moratorium is probably the wrong word, but they have the rights to put a hold on it. And say, we're not accepting the application at this time until our general plan is updated. The individual property owner has the right to go to LAFCO with the application directly. The LAFCO does not make any decision on the development of that property. It is strictly a land annexation application. It's either we're approving it to be annexed in, which it is an island right now, which would follow what the, the goals of LAFCO is, or it's rejected from the LAFCO commissioners. But it does not approve any development that would go back to the city planning. And then the city council would have to either approve or if there was an appeal. But my understanding is based on LAFCO and government code, applicants have the right to go direct to LAFCO. It does not mean that the commission has to accept it, but it does have to fall within the guidelines of what the purpose of LAFCO is. And because this is in island, it would be a consideration for LAFCO to look at annexing, but not developing it, does not approve development. So that's my only thing. I think our topic here is about the tax sharing agreement. I was looking at this as an opportunity. I am not a fan of the master tax sharing agreement when it comes to residential. And on the commercial side, i- if, if, if this board is happy with the tax sharing agreements, then I'm fine with the way they exist now. And they should follow the master tax sharing agreement, whether it's, if it's commercial or residential, whatever that is.
Sure. Yes, Supervisor Zenger?
Okay, so then if Supervisor Curro, is there, do you have a suggestion for what you'd want to see as the residential tax sharing here?
No, I wanted it to be a conversation between the city and the county and ensuring that we're getting what we need to maintain our side of the obligations of an annexation. I know that's a major conversation, but this opened that door because of it not having to follow the master tax sharing agreement. And it may not go anywhere, but at least a conversation between the city and the county. And I will defer to my colleagues that have dealt with it more than I have. But from my understanding, it, it, when it comes to residential, it's not as, as lucrative or because we can't make money, but we got to be able to perform the services as a commercial tax sharing agreement. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Velazquez.
Yeah, thank you so much. And my question would be on the legal side. So the letter from LAFCO executive officer states that, you know, clearly the timeline has been exceeded. We're pointing to the general plan amendment as the reason for that. There's still, that's still on hold now. Because the general plan was, is being potentially referended now. So I think from, from a legal standpoint, I believe everything's on hold until there's a decision made by the council on whether to approve that referendum or send that to the ballot. So in the meantime, the letter stating that failure to, you know, failure to basically start the process of negotiating a tax sharing agreement could lead to a more costly process under 99E. And I don't, I didn't get a chance to look up legal language or code that's stating that, you know, we could be penalized if we don't move forward with this. But obviously we haven't moved forward with it for a year or so. There, there must be some level of gray area there. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to have the conversation, let's not call it a negotiation, but to have the ad hoc, have the conversation with the city to get an understanding where they're at on this and then bringing it back potentially at the next meeting, or if there's a possibility of meeting between now and then, bringing it back with further clarity and having more legal analysis of the implications of not moving forward on negotiating a tax sharing agreement.
I think that's fine. And could we do both? Could we extend it to 90 days and also, right? No, I think that's a, yeah.
And, and my friend, sorry.
To answer your question, Ariel was able to find the zoning for all five parcels and if you want to see what.
Yeah, the general plan designation is residential mix for all five parcels and rural residential zoning for all five parcels.
For this, on the city side or the county side?
On the county side. Would you like me to look up the city?
No, I just, again, I think it goes back if it's going to be annexed to the city, what is it they're looking for as far as these agreements, tax sharing and so on, what their plans are.
And also keeping in mind that this potentially sets precedent on, there's a few other applications that are in the wings that are referenced in the letter that Jennifer Stevenson had brought up in LAFCO. So we don't want to trip over ourselves here considering it could be, you know, some after effects of that.
I would support that with just maybe having the LAFCO executive officer available at that meeting to answer any questions that you may have and we may have.
If she's available, yeah, yeah.
So if I understand, we're, we're agreeing to, to go forward with some kind of negotiation or talk with the city as, in regards to this specific development, right? And then how, how would that happen? Who's, if there's an ad hoc?
I would just suggest we have the housing reform policy ad hoc unless, unless there's other interest just to gauge it.
Personally, you know, the 90 days, but it's, for me, it's more of having a letter sent to the city saying they're looking to annex without going through the city, your view, and if they, if we do continue the tax sharing agreement. Is this, this, is that what you're looking to do? Or is there some other agreement you're looking for? Because at the end of the day, we're going to have to have that negotiation with them. So they, they might say, oh, we just go with what's already approved and we're okay with that. We, hey, we have a hangup over here for whatever reason, we're, we're okay with them moving forward. Or they say, no, we don't want to move forward yet until this happens. I'm just trying to prevent the runaround, avoiding the agencies to just kind of, well, I don't want to go through that process. I'm going to go straight to LAFCO. I, I, that's, that's all I'm trying to avoid. Whatever the city, obviously it is surrounded by the city and whatever it is they're looking to do, they're looking to do. Just, just the question is like, why, why didn't they allow that at that time? I don't know the answer.
And if I may, I, we already have sort of, I think, a recommendation out there, but would it be worth also exploring the question of this, this stipulation in the tax sharing agreement that pushes these piecemeal situations back to a tax, an individual tax sharing, just to get an understanding of that? Cause I know you alluded to it, but it's been a while as far as why that's in the master tax sharing agreement.
I, I don't want to waste staff's time on something that I don't think that this body is going to approve, whether I support it wholeheartedly or not. I don't want to waste staff's time on working out a new tax sharing agreement or discussing a new tax sharing agreement when it's very clear, I don't think it's going to go anywhere. So I have no problem except for stating for the record, I don't agree that our tax sharing agreements are fair for the county when it comes to residential. It may be for commercial, but it does not feel that way for, for residential. I just want it on the record. So if this body is good with the master tax sharing agreements that we have, move forward with a conversation with the city based on where they stand. And then if, the one thing I do know is an individual applicant of a property owner can go to LAFCO directly if the agencies are not willing to bring that application forward. So we have to let LAFCO go through its process and you guys are on LAFCO.
I appreciate that. I also think what the legal analysis might provide further.
True. And, and for this item, it's, it's for this specific.
It's only for this specific. It's not general. And I went through this with the LAFCO.
Want to consider something more general, we'd have to consider separately from this.
Are we, is everybody okay with, go ahead, Supervisor Setella?
I would just add that, you know, I don't think any, any of us were here when this, in 2019, when this original master tax sharing agreement. in 2019, when this original master tax sharing agreement was done. I think you were part of the one with the commercial, right? But I'm just wondering if maybe before we go too far down the road, whether, you know, yes, we like it, no, we don't, but that like maybe the housing, if the housing reform policy, if ad hoc is going to be working on this, maybe there's a little bit of time at least exploring and making sure that the 50 50 is a good deal for the county and making sure that we don't have to have further conversations. But I'm in support of the the 90 day extension. I would just say, the letter has some typos, so let's make sure that we clean that up a little bit. We ask for 30 days and we ask for 90 days. And so let's just be consistent, make sure that it's 90 days that we're asking for. And I think there was a date, I think you brought up a date.
Yeah, just for the record, I did, my name's on it, but I did not write this letter. So I know people are getting these things out quickly.
But I think that this is an opportunity for us to look at, you know, is this tax sharing agreement right for us? I mean, none of us were working, you know, we're sitting here on the Board of Supervisors when this was done. So this is an opportunity for us to, you know, work with our auditor and anybody else that that can kind of give us some insight and helping us formulate the best opportunity for the county.
Appreciate that. All right. Anything further?
Well, just clarity, what is that? So what are we doing with the the tax share? Are we just basically asking the city, hey, where are you guys at? Can we talk about it? Is that the plan? Are we going to write a letter? Is it trying to meet with them?
I thought it was the the hospital, hospitals, sorry, brains on another topic, that housing ad hoc would just have a conversation and say, are you guys okay? Just sticking with the same plan? Or do you want to have a conversation? I mean, it's totally up to you guys. You, as you know, you have the majority.
Yeah.
Well, now we, we, as the entire board.
So I just think we need to have some sort of, whether it's county staff, I would invite the city to be involved with that, to get further clarification on the implications of all of this and to bring the item back. Because we have these, their general plan situation, and we have these deadlines that are being extended. And whether we get an extension beyond the 90 days or not, where there's some kind of clock that's ticking, and I'd like to know more information on what the implications are and where they're at on this particular piece of these these properties, so that we can decide whether it makes more sense to punt it back to them or to approve some sort of moving ahead on it. We're going to have to do a tax sharing agreement either way. So I, there's something that's missing here that I think we all need a better understanding of. And that's why I think having that meeting with the city, get a full understanding, bring it back, and then make a decision on whether to negotiate a tax sharing agreement on this. And also getting a further legal analysis on the explanation of the implications of.
Sure.
Holding off further than we than we already are.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I think you heard, I think the 90 days.
You mentioned a letter we could send off. I just would like to get the conversation sooner than later, just because there's no reason for us to to play around here and, you know, punt it down the field too far.
We could reach out to the city for to meet.
Right.
I would highly recommend including, you know, your Lafco Executive Officer or Council.
Yeah.
Because they would be the experts.
Okay. Anything further? No, thank you very much. That was a presentation with direction that we just gave. So that would take us to, and we did public comment, am I correct?
Chair. And then just a formal, formal action for the letter with the with the corrections of the typos?
Yes. So there was the date at the top, said 2024.
We'll fix that, too.
What Supervisor Satella referenced was clarifying the 90 day extension. There were two separate.
Yeah, it says 30 in there.
Yeah, no problem.
Chair, can we take a five minute break? Our Zoom froze, so.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Five minute break. We're in recess. All right. Thank you. We are back from recess. We would take us to, we just said some technical difficulties. We'll go to 2.5, which is an update presentation on the potential to renovate the conference room at the homeless shelter to add more beds and status on the county policy in relation to encampment cleanups. We have Manny Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the on your request to get the conference room renovated and also on the encampment update. So we'll go ahead and get started. Ah, here we go. Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa. This is the agenda that I'm following, I'm going to follow. So we'll go as quickly as possible. We did the renovation of the the conference room at the shelter. We, there is a a letter agreement that we have with the property owner that's next to it. So we had to send them a letter letting them know that we were looking at expanding the capacity of the of the beds at the shelter, to which they've not responded. The letter was sent on February 6th. That was stated in the in the presentation. One of the things we found out during our discussions internally was that there, under the code requirements, we could only expand to 56 occupants at the current site. There's actually six single room occupant units that have restrooms, but the rest of the facility, we're tied to 56 units as we are, as that is right now. The cost based on on what RMA has looked at is around $20,000, and that's for making some modifications to the existing conference room. Here are some of the costs that are associated with the operations of the of the shelter in from in 2425. One of the things I wanted to point out, just as an FYI, the shelter is open from November through April 24 7, meaning 24 hours and seven, seven days a week. And from May through October, it's open from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Health and Human Services currently has a contract with Community Homeless Solutions to, on a three year contract to to provide the services to the clients there. The city of San, the bulk of the money comes from the Health and Human Services budget and also from the city of Hollister. The city of San Juan Batista is providing about $72,000 a year right now to provide supportive services, which are outreach, rehousing, and case management. As I mentioned, this is a three year contract that was signed several years ago, and it to a total of $1.6 million. In fiscal year 2324, Health and Human Services had spent $579,000. In 2425, which is the current budget, we've got $572,000 budgeted. Through December of 2024, Health and Human Services paid $328,000. The fiscal year 2526 budget is estimated as is currently $500,000 for shelter operations. As part of the expansion, we can, as I mentioned to you, we could only increase the amount by 12. Based on on Health and Human Services discussions with a vendor, they came back with a price over $200,000. And that's for a full year. So that's just not for the next four months, but that's a full year cost if we do, if they increase the, and we have a breakdown of some of the what that would cover. So if you're interested, I can, I can walk through that later. Here's the shelter operations, as I mentioned. These are some of the numbers that that are currently, in December, we had 34 clients staying at the at the shelter. In January, we had 43. Now moving on, if there's no further questions, I'll move on, go ahead and move into the the encampment area.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Just as an update on where we are in the encampments. On February 4th, the sheriff did send out letters to the property, to the private property owners along the river. Just another, just another point of of information. The code enforcement area, we had two unsuccessful recruitments for code enforcement officer position through Integrated Waste. Right now, we're in the process of doing a third, and they will be contracting with a vendor to, if we can't hire somebody by the time we start doing the cleanup, we'll hire somebody to to take care of that until we can hire somebody on a permanent basis. In discussions with with Integrated Waste, they were able to identify a current vendor that's doing work in for the cities of San Jose, Santa Clara, and Sunnyvale, that is interested in coming to San Benito and doing a cleanup for us. They actually came out on Friday to take a look at the at the river bottom and look at at the the site. In doing so, they said that after two, once we come back with a contract, which we're looking at coming back to the board for approval at the end of March, once, once the board approves the contract within two weeks, they're able to mobilize and start. And it'll take them between five to eight weeks to to clean up the the site. Once we approve the contract as well, we will be ordering one or two containers for personal belongings that will be part of the cleanup. Questions?
We will go to public comment first.
Oh, I still have some.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, man. I thought you were done. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll keep moving along. As far as other, looking at other funding options, we did look at the Home Key Plus funding program that's available through the state. And we did contact two nonprofit developers of affordable housing. One was interested, but their interest is only doing tiny homes. We looked at the property on Chapel Road and we also reached out to Chispa, which is a company, a nonprofit developer of housing in Salinas. And both, Chispa said that they could not get this site to work for them based on the state criteria for applying for tax credits. So they're not interested in in looking and partnering at this point. The other thing that's part of the, that's challenging to this particular funding source is that it's, it's, the aim of the money is aimed to, is, is, is aimed to help people with behavioral health challenges and veterans. So that makes it a little more challenging for, for, and then the, the other thing that in look, in reading all the material, one of the other things that it says is that once the money goes away from the the Home, the Home Key Plus program, the county has to pick up the the cost for behavioral, providing the behavioral health services. So in looking at that, staff is 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 recommending that we not pursue Home Key Plus money at this point. There'll be other money available at a future date, so we can pursue that. There is some money that we are going to continue to track, which is for the emergency resolution funding for encampment support funding and we're working with our grant program, our grant support program to to pursue that. So at this point, we have staff here from some of the departments that participated in creating this presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
And we have staff here. Otherwise, I don't know if we want to just go by question by question, or if there's anything in particular that departments would like to express that invite you to do so now. Seeing none, we have questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Satella?
Thank you. Sorry. Manny, I know you had mentioned one of the first items on kind of this list with the renovation, and I'm going to start with the renovation part first. The letter was sent to the property owner on February 6th, and I think you mentioned in your report that you have not heard anything. My question to you is, do we just have to notify the property owner or what of what we're doing? Or do they have to approve of what we're doing?
That's an excellent question, and I'm glad Barbara is here because she probably can answer that.
Okay, thank you.
And I can clarify, we have not heard a definitive answer from them. I did have a conversation with one of their attorneys who was going to raise it up the chain of command. So we have, we do need to reach an agreement with them to amend, to amend the agreement. And so I will, I've already followed up, leaving another message for them, trying to get back a response. And I'll follow up with an email and another letter with perhaps a proposed draft amendment to the agreement. And that way, we'll see whether we can get a yes or no from them.
But ultimately, they have to approve of this before we, I mean, it's not just notifying them of what we're doing. They actually have to approve it. Am I understanding that correctly, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
The county's position officially is that that agreement is no, look, the county could take the position that that agreement is no longer in full force and effect because of some of the terms of the agreement weren't complied with. But in, you know, in an abundance of caution, we were presenting it to them to say, we would like your opinion, you know, your agreement with this. If they don't agree with it, then the board can consider whether to proceed in different parameters, different ways.
Okay.
There were certain terms that they had to meet pursuant to that agreement for it to remain in full force and effect for 15 years.
Okay. Okay. So we really do need their approval, though, is kind of what I'm hearing you kind of say. I mean, there's ways, it sounds like there's ways around it, but it wouldn't be very, probably not in the nicest terms. I mean, it doesn't sound like we'd have a very good relationship properly, probably with the property owner.
I'm still hopeful, based, you know, I can present some further update at maybe at the next, I'm happy to to present a further update to the board, try to get in a, try to reach out and get a formal response from them, and then come back to the board and give an update or at least send an email about what their response is.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I think that would be great, because I think some of this that we're going to discuss until we have that done, there's not a whole lot. there's not a whole lot. Um, it said that the, I think it was twenty thousand was the cost for basic remodel of the conference and equipment, estimated at twenty thousand. Um, what exactly does that include? It doesn't seem, I mean, it seems like a lot, but then at the same time, I look at other projects and I'm like, oh, my gosh, that costs that much? And so twenty thousand for this renovation doesn't seem like enough, and so I'm just curious what it includes.
My understanding is some structural modifications, and Steve's here, maybe he can answer that question. Steve?
I mean, is that realistic that twenty thousand is enough to cover this?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, we actually, because sometimes we tend to underestimate, we actually over, like, we asked, we, we came up with the costs for some of the things Manny mentioned and some bug bands and things. It was actually about fourteen thousand, so we bumped it up to twenty thousand because it's, it's some pretty minor modification.
So what does it include?
Just beds, a partition, um, we have to... Well, actually, the locks on the already, the door, it's actually pretty minor. The, the trickier part is just the conversion or the, the lack of use of, I think, of the, the conference room is the trickier part. But, um, we've talked about potentially trying to separate the females and the males. So it's basically, it's just bedding accommodations is the main thing, so.
Okay, and then, is there a restroom over on that side as well?
So, well...
Showers?
They'd have to go back to the existing, it's kind of, it's, it's close by. And that was one of the limitations, like Manny said, we can add the six extra folks without doing any modifications to restrooms and showers.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Um, and then I think it said on the next one, it talked about, um, the additional twelve clients. Um, with the cost would be an additional two hundred thousand dollars, the operational costs of it.
Correct, yes, that's correct, and that's for a full year.
And, right, so I'm just curious, I think I wanted this, it talked about HHSA, all of the funding coming from HHSA and the city of Hollister. Do they have the funding availability to take on this additional two hundred thousand?
That is a good question, and I will have to defer to Tracy or Enrique, who, that's why, part of the reason I invited them.
Thank you.
Good morning, or afternoon.
Good morning, afternoon, yeah.
So all I could say is that there are always challenges to fund developing five hundred thousand plus every year. Right now, we do not have an additional two hundred thousand dollars to say we could, you know, afford it for next year or even the following year. So we, we don't have right now. We're always in, uh, proactive mode to fund develop. Uh, when C D B G comes up, when HAP five and six, uh, six is coming up, so we will definitely apply for that. But that is really to sustain what we have right now, which is five hundred K, and five hundred K has been what we've funded in the past, but with inflation and staff increases, the last couple of years, the, um, provider, operator has been really like, hey, we need more monies, we need more monies. And even this year alone, uh, at the end of, uh, next month, I'm estimating they're almost going to be, they're going to be like a ninety, ninety-five percent fully expensed. Uh, so I guess to answer your question, we do not have an additional money right now.
Is there any stability of the city of Hollister being able to fund up the additional piece of this, or are they at the max as well?
I have not had any discussions with the city Hollister on this. What I could say is last year, they did dedicate the P L H A full, not the full amount, five hundred eighty K. We used most of last year to fund the shelter, so, uh, for any additional, I have not had any discussions with them.
So is there any idea where we would get this two hundred thousand from for the additional operations, general fund? Is that, I mean, that, is that what we're, is that what's being proposed today, is that we take two hundred thousand from general fund and...
Well, I'm not, uh, making that proposal. What I'm saying is, uh, we do not have the additional funding. And if we were to be asked to provide these, this additional, uh, service for additional guests, I wouldn't know how to fund it, so that'll be a big challenge on us.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Enrique, while you're up here, do you know, um, I, I appreciate some of the numbers. Um, do you know, like, so it was July to January, but I would love to know kind of during, you know, last year, looking at kind of the rainy cold months, including February, March. Do you by chance know, like, what, or, or even if you don't have that, do you know what is the highest date, you know, number that we have for all of last year?
Yes, so, uh, I do have that, uh, data for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, that I have the data for most of the year. Um, for non-twenty-four, seven months, that is really July through October, the data that I do have. The average daily attendance, uh, was twenty-seven point one four.
Okay.
For those months. Uh, for the months of November through April, which were the twenty-four, seven months, uh, the average daily attendance was thirty-one point eight-five.
So we have had, I mean, if, if we had in January, I guess I kind of want to know, what is the, I appreciate the average, but what was the highest client count of any day in twenty-twenty-four?
Uh, both November and December, thirty-seven point eight-three and thirty-seven point nine-four.
Okay, and then in January of twenty-twenty-five, we had forty-three. So to date, January of twenty-five, we've had the highest occupancy.
Correct, and there are days during the month that we're at full capacity, not accepting any other clients. So usually during the winter months, that's where we have, uh, closest to full capacity.
And do you know for this month, I know the month isn't over yet, but has that, are the numbers running pretty consistent with January of twenty-five at that average count of forty, forty-three?
Yes, I'd be surprised if it's under forty. We do get, um, maybe two or three times a week updates, and they're usually over forty, uh, that we've been getting.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, what other questions do I have? Um, currently at the location, I know I've been out there, uh, both to the shelter as well as, uh, the community food bank and the county offices that are out there. There's a lot going on in that area. And I know that parking can be a real issue out there. Is there anything, are there any additional parking spaces or anything like that? Or, I mean, are you finding that, um, especially during the twenty-four hour, you know, during your winter months when you're opening, the shelter's open twenty-four hours? Um, are there any additional parking spaces or anything we can do to help alleviate the parking? I know it's a real challenge out there.
Well, I could just show you my, uh, what I've seen. Uh, there are many challenges to parking. There's no additional parking, uh, right there at the facility. There's only maybe nine or ten or so parking spaces, uh, but clients do have the ability to park elsewhere. But, um, certain days of the week, there's no parking at all. I had to go around and around and around, but, you know, for the most part, it is challenging, I think Fridays, Thursdays. Uh, but, you know, throughout the week, you know, if they, if they, uh, you know, go towards the back of the parking, they might find some. But, you know, we still have some parking challenges.
Okay, um, a little earlier, we were talking about the sixteen RVs that we have. Um, can you talk a little bit about kind of the pilot project that you guys have been kind of thinking about and working on?
So we do have, uh, five units that have been, um, repaired. RVs do have higher maintenance, uh, issues, so they were all repaired. They're all ready, uh, to go. They've been cleaned. Uh, we are creating the policy for a pilot transitional emergency type of program. So part of the goal is to work with those clients from the shelter that are more ready, whether they have, uh, income, uh, whether they're really active at seeking, uh, you know, contacting, applying for housing, uh, working with the caseworker. So i- individuals who are better prepared, our goal is to utilize, uh, up to five of the units that have been fully repaired. These are the original five units that we, we got. Uh, at some point, they will reference for COVID units because we're primarily using for that. Um, so our goal is to have a program set up that does provide supportive services, meaning, uh, case management, housing navigation, landlord engagement, and rental assistance if we do, if we are able to leverage other grants, uh, for them. So it'll be more like short term. We haven't quite figured out all details, but that is a general, uh, goal, uh, for us to utilize these units for that.
How quickly are you guys planning on kind of implementing this?
I'm hoping that within a month. Uh, so we have the first version of the policies. We have to get that going. Uh, we're reviewing them, and our goal, really, hopefully, we get them done in the next week or so, and then work with the, uh, staff. Because we still have to, like, who's going to manage, who's going to be the case manager? So, uh, internally, we're identifying a team member, and we're working on some of those details.
Okay, thank you. And is there any, oh, sorry, Tracy.
I just want to add a little bit to, um, the RVs. So we, um, what we've realized is we have expenses associated with the RVs. So the, the five that we call the COVID RVs, they were given to us by the state when the pandemic broke out. So we've used them for isolation. We no longer use them for that, for the most part. There's been some times where we've considered it when there's been some breakouts at the shelter for congregate care, but other than that, we really haven't used them. So we have ongoing expenses to keep the RVs maintained. Um, the P G and E bill, we have to pay, and we're covering, we're absorbing that as an agency right now. We have no, um, budget for that, but we've absorbed it into our budget. And so that's why we're considering, number one, to transition some folks out of the shelter who are somewhat stable and have some income. We've already worked with the shelter, and I think there's about seven, um, shelter clients that have capacity to afford some form of rent. Um, we've also talked with the Alliance, our managed care plan, who also offers some enhanced care management to these folks as well that could help support us to provide case management, because we don't want to just put them up there and leave them. They need to have, you know, ongoing case management and housing navigation, so we can help, hopefully, potentially secure them more permanent housing. And so, um, the other concern for us is there's a lot of theft up at the migrant center, unfortunately. Um, and so we've got these RVs in good repair, and just two days ago, there were several things that were stolen from them. So we need to get either them to have people in them, or we need to get them out of there, because, um, it's just a deficit to the county. Um, as Steve mentioned earlier, oh, there he is, um, we do have an RV contract, and we have had the gentlemen up there, and they're almost all in full repair. We just don't feel that we can house sixteen people at one time, um, because it's just too much of a heavy lift for my staff. Um, and so that's why we're thinking of piloting five single individuals, and that's what the shelter, you know, they accommodate single adults, um, to shift them there. And so that's our goal. Um, we're, we're trying to be ambitious about getting the pilot, um, program up and running. I'm a little bit more, I hope it's more sooner than a month, and that would, um, decrease the bed capacity at the shelter. So it's a temporary solution, um, in the event that this effort doesn't, doesn't pan out.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, is there any possibility of us, I know, we've talked a little, I mean, I know that previously during the winter months, the migrant center was used as shelter. Is there any possibility of us being able to, I, I know, I believe what I was told is that the state has told us we no longer can use that facility, um, for that purpose. Is there any opportunity? I mean, one is, am I understanding that correctly? And then, two, if that is correct, is there anything that we could do? Like, even as the board of supervisors and meeting with some of our state legislators and, and talking about what this means to our community and how much we need this?
I can, I can talk on it a little bit, and then he can add some highlights. So historically, the counties had two different operations up there. We've had the previous kind of homeless shelter, which was at the farm labor side of the campus, which is something that we could possibly consider, um, and have to be in conversations with F L A around that. That was historically the homeless kind of shelter, the warming shelter, what it was called historically. We had a family winter shelter in the migrant houses, um, during December to March.
Yeah.
December to March. Um, that again, is, is another program that we had to fund the operations of, and it was a challenge for us. And there were challenging things that happened up there as well. Um, we, um, last year, there was a murder up there during our program, and so we took a pause on it this year. Um, we did reach out to H C D around the use, H C D?
Yeah.
H C D, um, around the use of it, and they said that as emergencies arise, they will entertain the use of the center like we did in the storm. We used them for about a month and a half during the winter storm before we transitioned folks to the RV. So was there anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, yeah, just in addition to that, so they just didn't want to approve any lease agreement before there's no emergency. So if there's actually an emergency and we needed to use them, we could still request them. Uh, but, but keep in mind, that's only during the months of non-operating the, uh, the, the center, which is really through, uh, November or so, or December through, uh, March, middle of March.
How many families, though, did you have up there, like, that, for homeless families during that small wintertime?
Uh, twenty, twenty. We had a couple that exited early because they found housing, so we added a couple more. So usually, it's about twenty.
Okay, so do you think it's worth our efforts to be talking to our representatives about the need for that? Or no, you don't see that as a need right now?
Well, there, there's always a need. Uh, funding it is a different question. Uh, but for the housing units, I think for families, homeless families, that's more ideal. For individuals, I think the setup that we had utilizing the labor camp dormitory with, uh, Farm Labor Association was probably, uh, better suited for individuals.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, that's all I have, I think, on the, on the renovation side. And if I go to the encampment side, I'm just curious, I know, I appreciate the updates on kind of, and unfortunately, we haven't found anybody with integrated waste management to kind of help. Um, but have we had an opportunity, has the deputy that I believe we funded, has that position been hired for yet? Do you know?
I, I will have to check with the sheriff, but I'm not, I'm not aware of that, or, do you know, maybe Selena knows? Oh, Selena might know. Just as an FYI, though, I have reached out to the city of Hollister to let him know that we were presenting this today. I will, I will follow up with the city manager later, so I will ask him the question about the funding.
Okay, great. I mean, that's just my concern, is where are we going to get the funding to do this?
Good, um, good eve, or afternoon. I did speak to Sheriff Taylor this morning, and he did state that they've had a lot of luck with recruitment and interest, so he should have that assigned very soon.
And so I guess, when do we plan on start, to start enforcing kind of the encampment cleanup? When do we start? Like, what is the plan for that? Because I mean...
Well, the cleanup contractor stated that they would not be able to start the cleanup at the earliest, and again, it depends on the weather. But two weeks after the March twenty-fifth board meeting, which, when we plan to bring the contract forward to this board. Uh, so the work with the sheriff deputy, and hopefully, we can get the code enforcement officer contracted, um, that work contracted out. So we would probably be doing that work a few weeks leading up to the actual cleanup date.
Okay, so...
And then outreach, I would defer to, uh, Behavioral Health and Health and Human Services on how we want to time that into, uh, our posted notices. We have to post within seventy-two hours, uh, that, that the site would be, um, removed. And then prior to that, you would do the outreach work.
Okay, so April-ish timeframe, maybe?
Yeah, I would say, I would say April, again, depending on the weather. We can't have the cleanup contractors out with their equipment. We're not going to have any luck cleaning up anything if the riverbank is very muddy.
Because I'm, I'm just trying to, like, wrap my head around, okay, where is the, like, the need for the additional beds will be with the cleanup, right? Like, once that's kind of enforced, and if we're not enforcing until basically the weather gets essentially kind of better, um, and we're going, you know, let's just say you're at thirty-one. If they're able to move five people with this, um, pilot program of, of moving a few people to the RVs, now you're at twenty-six occupied beds, and you have twenty available. Am I right in those numbers? Enrique, Tracy, is that about right?
So right now, there's forty-four available beds, so that would make it eighteen available beds.
Right, but if it's, but that's today in February, when we're talking about not being, getting to this until April. We're not going to start the enforcement of this cleanup until, it sounds like, kind of April, dependent on weather, right? So all of your, the, the rain and all of that, it sounds like it's weather dependent, right? So it's got to be dry. So I'm saying, then you're going to go to your lower numbers of your operations.
Yes.
So that's where I was going. So I took your, your April number of thirty-one point eight.
Mm-hmm.
And I used that, and that really was your November to April, your average of thirty-one point eight. I took five away from that, let's just say twenty-seven. And you've got nineteen available beds at our current capacity. That includes your five, I'm assuming your pilot program that's two months from now.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to, like, wrap my head around, okay, it's going to cost us two hundred thousand dollars operationally, moving forward for the year, and twenty thousand, and is there a real, is there this need right this moment? And so that's why I was just trying to wrap my head around. So thank you. Okay, I'm good with my questions. Thank you. I apologize. That was really long.
Su- President Zenger?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so first off, I think it's actually a question for Barbara. So I'm just looking for clarity, because I'm a little confused still. Do we need their permission, or do we want their permission as far as the renovation? Do we need their permission or do we want their permission as far as the renovation?
We definitely want their permission for renovation.
So we don't need their permission?
And I'd prefer to kind of maybe deal with this in a kind of maybe a separate form to brief the board fully. Our position sent forth to the letter to them is that the contract is no longer in full force and effect, but that we are seeking, you know, that we are seeking their permission. That was the letter that went to them.
Okay.
So that there's no dispute. Yes.
I think. Okay, thank you. Got it. Thank you. So, so next, I guess, just for some of these numbers, yeah, Manny, that. So if I understand this, well, so I'm seeing six and 12. So I said, we could expand it to 12, but really we could only have six more because of the restroom situation?
The capacity for the restrooms is 56 total. So yes.
But then I think some of these numbers, like the 200,000 was for an additional 12, right?
Right. And that's for a full year too, assuming that we're at capacity. That's the assumption. Yes.
Okay. So, so currently it's, the capacity is 50, right? And it's 500,000 for a year?
Right.
And so that would move up to 62. And then the cost would jump from 500 to 700. So it's a 24% increase of capacity or a 40% increase of operational costs?
It's actually expanding to 12. You're right.
Right.
So there's 44 now and we can expand to 56. So we can expand to 12 in the conference room.
Okay, so it's, so it's moving from 44 to 56?
So the maximum capacity right now is 50 for the entire building. There's 44 in the shelter and six in the transitional housing unit. Transitional folks don't share the same bathroom. They have their same, they have their own bathrooms. So we're not counting them in the headcount for the bathrooms because the shared bathrooms are in the shelter capacity. Make sense?
Yes.
So we could actually expand the conference room a lot more, but we limited it because of the bathroom access.
Okay.
Make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Either way, my question still is a little, I guess I'm confused on the $200,000 for the increased operational costs.
Do you want us to kind of tell you how we?
Yeah, well, it just, yeah, yeah, because yeah, it'd be great.
Okay, so the, the approximate budget that we submitted, it's a budget that we came up with. So if this moves forward and we work with the operator, there might be other costs. So this is how we determine. So we do get monthly invoicing from the contractor. So keep, keep in mind that the conference room is not within the shelter. It's its own space. So it does require an additional staffing to monitor it. We, we have to have somebody in there just to make sure everything's going fine. So during the 24/7, there's three chefs. So you need to have at least three staff members or, or from the operator that manage. So based on that and based on the 24/7 months, half the year and the non-24/7, that is 157K. And that's including if they pay benefits at 30%. That's just my estimate. So they might hire temporary staff. There might not be any benefits or other benefits might be a little bit higher. So that's just my approximate. So for the year, 157K. Mails at $10 an average. Three, that includes three meals a day for those 12 additional clients at 365 days. That's an additional 43,800. In, in addition, janitorial cleaning, that might pick it up. You know, they do provide cleaning. So that may be an additional cost of 13K. And there might be other costs, electrical, you know, higher usage of electricity, program supplies, office supplies, training supplies or. And this is not even including other events. I just put under other, at least additional five. And that's 238, including the 20K that was already talked about. So if we approximate 200K, that's just our approximate. We could always solidify numbers with the operator.
Right. Okay, so it's, I guess the bulk of that would be because they need to add a whole new staff member to supervise.
Yeah.
And they need the constant supervision in that room? I see. Okay, yeah. Because, because it's currently, I guess it's all just the extra staff member then, right? Because like I said, it's only 27% increase of capacity, but a 40% cost increase.
Yeah, for, for the most part, it's staffing. So yeah. If it was in the same area, then I, I think that the picture would be different.
Right. And I know there is some, last time we talked about this, there was some suggestions thrown out. Well, the conference room isn't the best spot we could expand elsewhere. But I can't imagine, if you expanded anywhere else, it would surely be more, right? Not less than the, in terms of operational costs and renovative costs, right?
Well, if it's a different building, separate, I guarantee it'll be more than 200K.
Okay. So this, okay, so that's what I was, yeah. So this, just if we wanted more beds in the shelter, this would be the most cost efficient way to do it, is from what I understand. Does that seem right or does it seem like there's a cheaper way to add beds there that I'm missing?
I think this is probably the most economical way.
Okay.
Than other options.
Right, right. Then yeah, the more creative options that we discussed. Okay, got it. Thank you. I was just, that's, that's all the clarity on the cost there. I had some questions. Oh, just, so the RVs, Tracy, if you don't mind, the RVs. They're costing the county money. I, eventually I think we seriously need to talk about getting rid of them, selling them if they're just going to cost us money. It doesn't make any sense to me. Is that, I mean, you said that's one of the options. Is that where you're at? Do you, what do you think?
You know, it was a difficult challenge for our agency during the storm months of the 11 housed, the 16 folks that we housed. They're not really intended to live in, right? I mean, RVs are intended to travel in and to have short-term stays. And we had families in there. So we had large families in there at times. The upkeep was really tough for us. There's also some issues around propane. So propane tanks have to be refilled regularly. Steve's team during the storm accommodated that. They were out there at least once a day filling the propane tank. So there are a lot of added duties for my staff and RMA staff that we had to adjust our, our staff time to. I think it's not ideal, but I think we could try this pilot with single adults to see if we could possibly make it work. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know without trying with single folks and having it more case managed. I don't think it's ideal. I think that if we could put something, a more permanent structure out there, like a, a mobile home on the pads that are out there, I think that would be a better option than these RVs that require a lot of service.
Right. Well, if I had to bet on it, I would bet we're going to end up selling them in the end, personally. Okay, questions, I guess regarding now switching to the encampment cleanup. So I guess the suggestion was to contract out the work because we can't get the, the recruitment's aren't working for code enforcement, right?
For the staff.
Yeah, well, I'm totally in support of that. Whatever we can do to, to push this along because I just don't want to keep, I don't want to delay things indefinitely. I want to make sure we're making progress on this. And I know that the sheriff, I guess Selena told us that he said very soon. Is there any idea what that means in terms of specifics?
No, I do not know. I know he's, he's not available today, but we will work on getting an update. I, I think even if he does not have, I don't want to speak for him, but what I've heard him state before is, is if he doesn't have someone assigned or the new staff filled, he would work to assign someone else to meet the county's deadline.
And our interim CIO ring had something to add?
Uh, yes, I have an update from HR. It looks like there is a deputy that's being hired. I can't determine if that's going to be assigned there, but there's hiring that's occurring, so.
Well, that was very soon. There you go. Great, great. Because I just want to move along with what we've been working on this whole time as, you know, expediently as possible so that we can keep making progress in this area. I think that's it. Thank you.
I would add that because we're able to utilize an existing contract from another municipality, it's actually sped up the process. Because if we would have gone through an RFP process, it would have been longer. So just as an FYI.
Great.
And I, I'm going to go next. I brought this item up and I, I also know that Supervisor Velazquez in years past as mayor was very passionate about this issue. But I did have some relevant questions to what's been discussed. So I just want to continue the conversation. The RVs, I think, is a separate issue. We need more shelter space. We need more transitional housing. I don't necessarily think, you know, we do or don't do something with the conference rooms at the shelter based on the RVs. I'm not sure the RVs are the right situation in hindsight now. I'd like to know if other counties are using RVs in a similar fashion. It just seems like we should take a serious look at just selling the RVs and cutting our losses, to be really frank about it. And that's, that would, that would really be my recommendation at this point on the RVs. And then have we, have we explored, is there a possibility of working with the contractor on a more of a part-time situation? Because you're, you're ballparking basically a full-time, year-round, annual benefits person. Whereas this, I'm envisioning this as sort of like overflow. I mean, we looked at the numbers and we barely ever reach capacity. People don't want to go to the shelter. We're trying to offer additional space and places for these folks to go if they do choose to go. But in reality, they're probably not going to go. We're probably mostly not even going to need this area. But we should have it just in case. And do we really need a full-time person to be working all year round for $137,000 a year?
Again, this was just an estimate based off of our assumption. We haven't approached the vendor yet, our contractor yet. Happy to do that. Happy to have conversations with them on what they foresee it looking like and give us a written estimate of what it would cost. We are just assuming based off the proximity. It's not that close. It really is out of sight and you cannot hear. So, you know, sometimes some shenanigans happen at the shelter. And so we would have to ask them what level of monitoring they would need. But we're happy to do that. We meet with them regularly.
I think that would be a wise approach, just trying to refine that number somewhat, working with the consultant. You know, and then a question I had is if we didn't have this whole restroom situation, do we know how many beds we could add?
I can, I can get it for you. I have it in an email. I just don't have it on the top of my head.
Because I'm just wondering if, you know, maybe I'm off base here, but if we looked at, are we talking about adding a restroom or two, or two restrooms potentially? What, what cost would that?
I have it in, I have it in an email. I can check.
Okay, okay. Because I'm wondering what that cost might be to add restrooms. If we could, we're adding restrooms and then we're able to add more space, that, that would make sense to me to look at that.
Yeah, let me check. I have the number.
Okay, great. And then, let's see. Yeah, I agree with the, the percentage seeming off on the, you know, but now you've mentioned you're going to go, you can go back and try to refine that estimate with the, the operator. But just in hindsight, you know, 27% increase in bed space, but a close to 40% increase in operational costs. So I'm still on board. I, I do, I would like to know, are there existing? So, so are there, you basically said there aren't any funding options currently? Are there existing sources of funding that we have that are either allocated or unallocated? Something that we could shift toward this potentially? And we have the budget coming up here that, you know, we always have to deal with frankly, priorities in this county. That's our job is to make challenging decisions. And if there's another area of HHS funding where we could be eligible to shift that toward this, I certainly would want to know that as well.
So that I'm aware of, no. We, the, the funding source that I know, we have some funds that should take us maybe another six, seven, eight months is the State Homeless Housing Assistance Program. And that's what we are using presently. So any funding that we have presently is, and if we were to utilize it for added space, then it's going to take away from longer-term operations. So but for HAP6 that just was released, I believe yesterday, we will be applying for, for this as well, for shelter operations. And also the PLHA grant that is due in June, we will be applying that funds. And I think that for that one, it's going to be like 250K. And it'll be for operations.
Yeah, I would appreciate applying for all these and I'd appreciate more further scrutiny from the budget side as far as just really diving in as far as what other potential avenues. Because the priority should be adding shelter space as far as I'm concerned. If we have programs that maybe aren't, I'm not saying they're not important, but maybe they're not on the highest level as far as this is concerned. Because we are committed to cleaning up these encampments, but we're also committed to at least offering shelter space. And that's the reason why we're doing this. So yeah, that would be great if we could get more answers on that. As far as removing the encampments, I'm just wondering. So the timeline you're saying is, is mid-April. It sounds like, I, I'm, I'm fully supportive of moving ahead on that as soon as you possibly can. It sounds like the sheriff has been, you know, he's on the record saying that he's willing to commit the resources, whether or not this person is in and trained or not, but yet. So I'm hoping we can stick to that April timeline. And then, and then just want to look at, you know, putting this on the plate for whatever, again, whatever funding possibilities there are overall that we should be pursuing. But I, I think maybe come back. My recommendation is to get, if we don't have those answers today on, like, for instance, what I asked about the restroom situation, what that cost might be, getting a few more of those answers and coming back for another, you know, maybe a final decision with the refined recommendations. And I would, I still am supportive of, of investing in the renovation while pursuing dollars to cover the operational costs. Thank you. Supervisor Velazquez.
Thank you. So I happen to be involved in this for many, many years. From actually since the beginning. Matter of fact, I just had a memory show up on my phone from February 21st, 2014. And that is when myself and Jim Riding Sword, which by the way, I want to eventually name the shelter after, after him, went to Santa Barbara for a conference on how do we deal with sheltering homeless instead of this tactic that we had in the past where everybody ignored the problem. And then together we worked from the city side and the county side to create a solution to this. You remember those first conversations where it was a literal battle to get anywhere with it until we finally had the opportunity to apply for a grant. And the conversation was, we don't have enough time, so how can we do this? And I remember my answer at the time was, well, one thing's for sure. If we don't apply, we'll never get the money. We applied and we, we won the grant and eventually this shelter got built. But we missed opportunities along the way of how to do this. And it's, it's an ongoing challenge and we all that have been involved in this understand that part. First part is the public's perception of this is the cleanup. What are we going to do to clean this thing up? And this is not going to be solved if that's not a partnership with the city, by the way. It has to. You guys know the boundaries. And those that live in the river know the boundaries. So it's squeezing a balloon if we don't work together. And there's ways to clean up. The city's cleaned up their portion of it in the past. Actually pretty inexpensively by using the resources they had. But the key here is to make sure we hold those that own property in those certain areas accountable. And that's really the answer is, hey, you're, you're responsible for cleaning up that river. Or you could be fined quite a bit just from state agencies. So we have to make sure we're holding them accountable. They know that. They know. So if they want to ignore the, the letters, well, then they're going to have to face the fines. So we have to work together with the city. And I think, you know, one agency, whether it's the city or the county, can have that patrol that goes through there. Because if we start cleaning up, we have to commit to cleaning up and not allowing the re-encampment of certain individuals that know how this works. So I think we can do that. We could do that relatively quickly. I think it is a little wet right now, but we need to start notifying those in the camps that this is going to happen. It's going to happen soon. So this then translates to who's going to seek shelter from that point. And that's what your presentation is about, the expansion. And my experience over the years is very, very few of those that are on the river are going to come to the shelter. They just don't for different reasons. And if you understand the, the homeless situation, very transient, they, they, they flow through a pathway basically from San Jose all the way down to LA. And Hollister is one of those stops for them. And some will stay here longer than others. And then they go as pressure is put on. We need to make sure that, again, we're working with, with the city of Hollister to not only clean up the river, but clean up other areas that there's campsites around throughout the city and then transfers to the county. But I don't see the numbers increasing that much. But I do think we do need to have extra space ready for it. I can remember this conversation when we first started this journey, that we should have the potential of 100 beds in case it ever happens. The numbers have held, the numbers I'm looking at held steady over the years. So I think we can work with what we have without really increasing the budget or a lot of the expenses. So I, I don't think we should be going down the path of, you know, worrying about the 200,000 more or different dollars. What we need to start with is a commitment to clean up. That's the start of it all. And if we get through that, then we'll start to understand what the real numbers are as we move forward. But if we need to be committed to the cleanup and staying with that cleanup so they don't set up camp again. It's a waiting game and they know, they know the game. So, you know, some of them do want help, some won't get help. Just, I've dealt with them for 15, 20 years and it's just the way it is. But we have to make sure our community is, knows that we're working to make sure they're safe. We can't have fires along the river every summer. We all know that. That costs a lot of money to send out the support, fire, medical out to the rivers. It's extremely expensive. So we have to focus in on this. If I'm here in April, we got to move in April and start to clear the encampments. And I think we could actually do it if we don't have the contractor you're talking about, resources within the city or the county to bring the equipment out to, to pull out a lot of the debris. So I think that's the first step. I think once we do that, you're not going to see the numbers that you need to really expand just yet, but we do need to start planning for it.
Supervisor Curl.
I'm going to agree completely that we need to collaborate with the city of Hollister. I would really highly recommend a continuing conversation with the Intergovernmental Committee and really looking at the statistics during the rollout. If this is done collaboratively where you're, you're tracking where they're moving, because they're going to move and it's going to impact the city and the city needs to know and be a part of what we're working on. Because what we don't want to have happen is just move the problem. That's what we don't want to have happen. So we need to make sure that we're collaboratively working to resolve the encampment issue and, and roll it out so that it's not boom, all of a sudden we just moved a whole group to another location. I don't know, these are just, I'm sure you've thought of these, Tracy and Enrique, I thank you both and Manny. You know, hotel vouchers as a, as a backup plan on the expansion or the RV overflow as an interim backup. I know the RV and removal or, or selling of the RVs is a whole nother topic. But previous discussions for long-term shelter projects, we were always talking about these, how are we going to do this? We had the, am I saying it? Weeby, Weeby Motel, which that didn't work out. We had the property just adjacent to the hosp, to the homeless shelter and that got sold and now with something else. But we really have to start looking at the long-term and the facilities issues. And I know we don't have the facilities committee anymore, but I think bringing that topic back to talk about, we can do this as the interim, but what's the long-term plan? Also, staff safety is always up there and community safety is always up there as my highest priorities. Ensuring that if there's a risk assessment for using the conference room, we need to make sure that the staff are safe, feel safe, are in a safe environment. I just want to make sure that that is known and on the record, that I want staff safety to be a part of this conversation. And making sure that their working environments are not now being altered in a way that makes them feel unsafe. And then the sustainability of maintenance and Supervisor Velazquez talked about this and enforcement. This isn't, we already know a cleanup and begone is not going to work. It just comes back. So the deputy and code enforcement and making sure that we're doing this at a pace that we can manage the shift and the individual's needs, we're being humane about it. We're ensuring that we're connecting them with the care that they could get and the services that they can get as long as we're not just going in and saying, everybody out, this is, you know, I just, the public perception is that we're going in and we're just going to, you know, push everybody out. That's not what this is doing. And I know Manny, you're a very compassionate person. All the staff are compassionate people. We just need to remember the human side of this and make sure that if we're doing it, we're not rushing it. Let's not rush through something that's going to be causing us more financial issues later. Let's really be methodical about it. And I'm open to all the suggestions from my colleagues and the board and the staff. I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Tracy has an update, Chair.
So the requirement is one shower for each, for eight guests. So the shelter occupancy could go to 62 with the current structure, but RMA feels that in the expansion of the conference room, we could go up to 27. So we would just have to do the math of how many extra showers we would need. I don't know off the top of my head how many are currently there, but at the max capacity in the conference room, he felt was 27 beds. The other thing that I've kind of just been thinking about as I've been listening is, you know, there's nothing to say that we can't get cots and during the winter months block off our conference room. We control our conference room. We control who goes in there. We control the schedule. We would still have to talk with the vendor, the contractor to see if they could, but we could make it a less formal, like this is a conversion, just if this is an overflow room in the event that we reach capacity and you need some spaces, kind of like we stand up a shelter for a storm, right? The same way we shelter in place for those types of things. We have a little bit, we have control over who goes in our conference room. We would still have to do a little bit of revisions on some of the doors that would need to be secured so that they can't access where my staff are. But that is something as a, as a temporary solution that we could explore. It wouldn't, we couldn't put bunk beds in there because we would still want to be able to utilize it as a conference room, but we could, we may have to get a storage shed to put, to put, to store the cots in or maybe OES has some that we could borrow or, I'm not sure, but I'm just trying to kind of think outside of the box to not make it a permanent fixture, but make it something a little bit more creative that we could see if community homeless citizens would utilize it as an overflow room. So when we got past 44, they wouldn't have to turn folks away and they could have a bed especially during the winter months. That's the other kind of thought I was tossing around.
Further thoughts?
I just wanted to make sure I heard that. You said in the existing configuration, you get up to 62?
We could add 12 beds with the current bathroom structure.
Okay.
So 12, 12 in the, in the conference room.
Okay.
If we wanted to add the total max capacity that Salmon from RMA said would be 27 total in that room, so 12.
Right, 15 more. So we can get 12 more with the existing bathroom setup that we have?
Yes.
And all of that would really need to be reconfigured as entryways from that hallway to the conference room.
We would just have to lock the doors where my staff sit so they couldn't go into that area of the building.
And, you know, I guess I didn't speak about this, but you talked about the extra staffing. But really, you know, if you look at this, staff are not in the dorms as it is at night. They don't sit in the dorms. They're listening for problems and obviously they can hear them as they're a little bit closer to it. But so by having monitors or different things, they can do the same thing. It's not as if, look, we had to put six more people tonight, so let's hire.
The structure is different. So there are fire doors in between where their staff are and where we are. So they wouldn't be able to hear anything. They would have to put somebody somewhere in the hallway. I'm not sure where. I don't know if they'd sit in the conference room. I'm not sure. If you remember how it's arranged, there is some very clear separation between the two buildings.
Yeah, well, I know, but I, what I'm saying is there was ways, actual ways to do this without having to do all what you're saying. And I remember walking this many times. I remember coming up to the whole concept, why don't we use this conference room for overflow years ago? And I've walked it several times to look at that. So I know it can be done without having to add. And again, as you pointed out, they could be just overflow on those every once in a while when it happens. But I think, again, for me, it's getting started with what we have to do first is the cleanup. You're going to start seeing what's really going on out there.
Right. So what I'm hearing basically is to gain clarity from the property owner on renovation expansion, which Barbara had mentioned, for staff to gain clarity, further clarity on the operational costs if we were going to expand from 12, by 12. Is there an interest other than me to look at the possibility of expanding by 27 beds and what their cost would be? We would have to add shower facilities is what it sounded like? Another?
Mr. Chair, first I would say we start with the cleanup and we're going to get a better idea of what, how that changes numbers. And just by history of going through this before, I remember when we did the cleanup in the past, there was this fear that there was going to be an overflow of people coming in the shelter and it did not happen at all. So I think we start with that, see what's going on. And if we do see numbers increase, I think it, we should really look at the 27 as you were pointing out for a permanent answer to this.
And then I would also support just looking at any sort of alternative, whatever's legally allowed, alternative mechanism to, to monitor if this is a part-time, very part-time overflow model as opposed to having to hire a person. It just seems unreasonable to have to hire somebody just to, for an overflow type room, if that's possible. And then I also would support Supervisor Curl's suggestion to keep this on the table at Intergovernmental and to, you know, continue the conversation with Hollister about not only the encampment consistency, but also the funding of the homeless shelter. Anything further? All right, I think we're finished with that item. Anything further from staff?
No, I just thought I want to thank all the staff that's been participating in this. This effort is, it's huge and I think they're all very committed to it, so I appreciate their, their support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we did go to public comment initially, so that would take us to 3.1, future agenda items, discuss and approve future agenda requests submitted by board members. We have two and they're both from Supervisor Curl.
I'll do this really fast. I sent the board through, the clerk of the board. The first item is to bring nonprofit developers and how affordable housing is built in other jurisdictions, including farm worker housing. I'd like to also possibly amend this and add transitional housing because of the conversation that we just had and have them do a, a presentation before us about what other jurisdictions have done, the give, the take, the, the fees, the, the funding requests from HUD and our USDA rural development. If that's something that this board would be willing to just consider a informational presentation, it would be strictly to just inform us and inform the public.
All right.
I think this is the one, we don't do public comment and we just kind of nod if we're all in agreement.
Yeah, I think we'll do, do we have to do public comment on the future as a whole? I guess we don't, huh? Future agenda items as a whole.
If it's, yep.
Oh, really? Oh, we hadn't done it in the past. Sorry. My apologies, Manny, Mr. Chair.
It's a funky one. So let's go to public comment and then we'll come back quick.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public.
All right. So the first one, nonprofit presentation. We have a nod yes. I'm fine with that as well.
And maybe even including, because I really like Supervisor Velazquez's ideas about multi-use, how affordable housing and multi-use with commercial could potentially be something that we look at in the future, so.
And you were, Mr. Velazquez?
Oh, I was just going to say, it, it doesn't hurt to have the conversation, but I mean, just.
And let's limit our, our opinions on that matter. And then would we be directing staff to just reach out to the suggested entities? Is that?
I've already personally reached out to a couple of them and they're very interested in doing a presentation.
You would like to work with staff on reaching out and communicating, if that's okay?
And we'll keep it short and brief, just informational only.
Great. And then the second item, Supervisor Curl.
This one was brought to us by CSAC and I also forwarded this link. I apologize that in this document, it was not a click and take you to it. You had to cut it and go to it. This is Brown Act Reform and it's really focusing on committees so that committees, especially advisory committees in the community, can have more flexibility to be about Zoom attendance because we want more community engagement and I would really like the support of the board to bring back an item and the draft letter for review and comment and potential approval.
Yep.
Okay, I'm seeing nods. It's okay. Thank you and thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And just to clarify, as far, I don't want to, not trying to shut off Supervisor Velazquez, but that's been the precedent in the past as far as just letting me.
That makes sense.
Future items, okay. All right, thank you. And so that would bring us, anything further?
Did we have to give you notification of items? I just, the conversation just brought back the memories of the person that really helped create the homeless shelter, Jim Riding Sword, who never got the credit for it. And without him, we would not have a shelter there right now.
So we, since we are on future agenda items, you would just fill out the, the form? If you can get that in as soon as possible, we can potentially get that on the March 11th meeting.
Thank you.
For consideration. Thank you. I think that's it for future items. That would bring us to our adjournment. Thank you very much.